Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future counting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Good afternoon. Welcome, Glendale City Council Workshop Session, May 9, 2023. Meeting is called to order. We'll conduct a roll call. Please signify by saying present. Councilmember Aldama called in, said he wouldn't make it. Councilmember Hugh?
Here.
Councilmember Melner?
Here.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Vice Mayor?
Here.
And Chairman's present. Ms. Barr, would you introduce item number one so we get rolling here?
2023 National Community Survey.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide our first staff report today will be led by Kayla Stanfield. She's, of course, our Director of Department of Organization Performance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Today's presentation is an update on the National Community Survey. The city manager's office, in conjunction with the Department of Organizational Performance, interviewed and received demonstrations from several vendors, and we selected Polco as our administrator of the National Community Survey for the Glendale residents. A few reasons why we chose Polco is for their continued partnership with ICMA, experience in local government, and the ability to benchmark against a broad range of cities. The NCS is used by over 500 communities nationwide, which allows the city to use the data provided by the survey to compare to other cities and towns across the country. The Polco platform also will give the city the tools it needs to inform data-driven decisions about the areas that are most important to its residents. I would like to introduce Mr. Joseph Delolio, who is the Senior Project Manager with Polco, who will be sharing the high-level results of the National Community Survey with you today.
Thank you, Ms. Stanfield. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for having me in to present in person about the NCS. Again, my name is Joe Delolio, Representative of Polco NRC. Yes, sir.
Do me one favor. I can hear you good right now, but kind of point the microphone a little bit closer to you.
Gotcha.
So as you turn your head and stuff, it's easier for everybody to hear.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Getting used to the microphone setup. But yes, thank you so much for having me here in person, and it's a pleasure to be able to see the community myself with my own two eyes. So before getting into this, I do want to thank a few folks, Ms. Stanfield, for being the main point of contact at the city of Glendale. She was vital for feedback on the survey itself, making sure we got it into the field in timely fashion. So thank you so much for your work on this project. I also do want to thank my colleague, Stephen Vickers, who was the main project manager on this go-around of the NCS as well. A little bit about us. National Research Center has been the premier provider of survey services for local government for the past 25 years. We do have longstanding partnerships with both ICMA as well as National League of Cities. And in 2015, we merged with Polco, an online civic engagement platform, so we can better service the residents in these jurisdictions that we work with. And before diving into results, I want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways that those results can be used. Most commonly, the jurisdictions we work with use their survey data to monitor trends in resident opinion over time, measure government performance and ratings of public trust, and inform budgeting processes and strategic planning. We also do offer benchmarking to other communities, which I will jump into in a few minutes. So the National Community Survey, or the NCS, is a standardized, five-page, comprehensive survey that allows municipalities to assess resident opinion about their community and local government. The NCS, or the National Community Survey, focuses on these 10 facets of community livability. These are the areas identified by survey researchers as being most vital in creating communities that folks want to live in, and also the most impactful aspects of life for these folks. We also do find that they fit nicely into different departments, so when department heads are looking for the data most pertinent to them, it's easy to find. So this presentation, as well as the report overall, are centered around these 10 facets of community livability. And getting into the methods that we use for this survey, this is Glendale's first time conducting the NCS. It was open for around the six-week span between early January and late February, early this year, and we employed a probability-based survey for this. So to build this sample, it started looking at all of the addresses according to the U.S. Postal Service that are within Glendale, and then using the GIS and municipal boundary files provided by the city, we pared those down to make sure that we were looking only at those households within the defined area of Glendale. From there, we employed what we refer to as systematic sampling. It's a process where every address has a known probability of selection and the same probability of selection to be part of that sample. So using that approach, we selected 5,000 households at random to receive the survey, and they had two points of contact, the first of which being a pre-notification postcard, giving them a little bit of background to the survey, inviting them to respond online. And then one week later, that was followed by a physical survey packet that had a welcome letter, giving them, again, some background information to the survey, inviting them to respond, a physical survey with postage-paid return envelope, as well as a URL to respond online as well. I do want to note that the survey was available in both English and Spanish, and all mailed materials contain instruction how to access the survey in both of those languages. Of those 5,000 addresses of those households that received the survey, we received back 375 total responses, which correlates to about an 8% response rate at a plus-or-minus 5% margin of error, and that falls right in line with what we would expect to see with the NCS.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. What is a probability-based sample? What does that mean?
Yes, council member, that's a great question. So in survey design, without getting too pedantic myself, as I tend to be as a survey researcher, there's a couple different ways that we can employ a survey. One that we see nationally is the census, and that's when we send it out to everybody. But that's not cost-effective and can be quite cumbersome. So this is a way for us to get a great representation of the community as a whole without sending it to everybody individually. So we randomly select households to receive the survey, and that gives us a great view into Glendale as a whole.
So how are they selected? I guess, how are they selected? I mean, is it just equal number from every district? Or, I mean, I'm just curious, what probability formula was used to select the 5,000 sample?
Yeah, so with that systematic sampling is the gold standard of survey research. We also fall in line with the organization called APOR, which is more or less, I don't want to say governing body, but that leading research for surveys. And so that, we don't necessarily, depending on the survey effort, we may do what we call proportional sampling, which is the same number of households from each district. But for Glendale, what we did was didn't limit those necessarily per district, and it was Glendale as a whole that we selected those households from. And then we see that those proportions generally fall in line with the population we'd expect to see parsed out between those districts.
Okay. And one more, Mayor. 8%, you said, is generally the average or below-average response or above-average response? 8% of respondents actually participating seems low to me.
Yeah, that's a great question as well. That is right in line with what we would expect, right in that average range. And one of the things I like to point to with this is, we know Glendale is a vibrant community, many folks live here, and we often see survey efforts or polling efforts for, let's say, at the national level for presidential polling, actually have similar numbers or less numbers, and are fairly accurate, are very accurate for presidential or other national races. So this number of responses that we have are actually equal to or greater than those that would be used at the national level.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. And along with that random sample, for two weeks, we did also open up the survey to the community at large. This was a separate effort and was tracked separately, but we wanted to make sure that folks knew that all voices were welcome, and anybody who wasn't included in that random sample was more than welcome to respond and provide their input. We received 130 responses to that effort as well. And then I do also want to note that both surveys were statistically weighted, so we refer back to the U.S. Census as well as the American Community Survey, that's run at a greater frequency than the overall census, to do that demographic reweighting. And that just allows us to get a great representation of Glendale as a whole. And jumping into the benchmarking, one of the advantages that local government have in participating in the NCS is the opportunity to compare ratings given by your residents to those from communities across the nation. And this was born out of seeing that there are some areas that tend to garner higher and more positive responses overall, such as fire services, and there are some areas that garner, you know, lower positivity overall, we'll say, for this, anecdotally, street-related services. So instead of comparing those unlike items, we can compare fire services to fire services, and then street-related services in Glendale to street-related services, you know, in other communities across the nation. Something I'll touch on a little later on, we have these national benchmarks that encompasses the opinions of over 50 million residents from over 500 communities across the nation. And then also, Glendale elected to do more regional benchmarks, so we have two sets of those comparisons, and I'll speak a little bit about that more in a few slides. And then to keep things up to date and current, for these comparisons, we only look five years back. And before moving on to an overview of the results, something I want to note as well is, the communities that run the National Community Survey, the communities that really want to hear from their residents, engage with them, use the information to make decisions, are what we would refer to as high-performing communities. So I think that's a great thing to keep in mind and contextualize as we look at these benchmarks, especially, and considering that Glendale very much falls in line with those high-performing communities as well. Now getting into an overview of these survey results, we're going to look at the demographics of these respondents before jumping into specific scores. So who took the survey? Looking at race and ethnicity first, we can see that it was about a 70/30 split between those who identify as white alone compared to those who identify as Spanish, Hispanic, or Latino. And then we see a similar split when we break it out a little more specifically, around that 70% white alone, and a little bit more even in those breakdowns thereafter. Looking at household income, we can see that there are a few brackets that we see more than others, that 25,000 to 49,000. Again, 50,000 to 74,000, and then we see a jump in that 100,000 to 150,000 as well. And again, this is household income, so not individual.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So on this particular slide, the drop there in the income group from 75,000 to 99,000, is that an actual drop in that income group across our community? Or was it just that for the, in the random sample, it dropped and then it was weighted to include whatever the actual number would have been?
Yeah, council member, that's a great question. And so this is the weighted data, although I would expect this to fall in line with the demographics of Glendale as a whole.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
I apologize if I break every little bit. I'm getting used to the Phoenix dryness, so I'm not used to having to go to the water as often as usual.
Yeah, just wait for a couple months.
So then looking at the gender breakdown, it's about an even split between those who identify as men and women, and just under 1% identified in a different way. And then we have age breakdowns as well. We can see a very large number from that 25 to 34, and most of it falls in line between that 25 to 54 range. And I want to call this out, I think this is especially interesting. In survey research, it can be a little more difficult to connect with what we consider to be that younger, or those younger age brackets, and so we see comparatively an exceptional number of younger folks participating in the survey in Glendale. And in the survey, we do have two questions that directly ask about those 10 facets of community livability. The first question asks residents to rate the overall quality of each of these facets. And then we can see here that in these comparisons, in these results showing, this shows the percent excellent or good, or if there's a different scale, the percent positive of those who responded. So that correlation we see to the right here, and we'll see this flow throughout the report, of those who rated positively to a specific question. So we can see here the responses to the overall quality of these 10 facets of community livability in Glendale. And then that second question we ask is around the importance that folks place on each of these facets. So these are folks that say that it's essential or very important for the city to focus on these facets in the coming two years. And together, we put those data together to create what I think is an aptly-called quality and importance metric. And so this allows us to identify, relatively speaking, any discrepancies between, or any differences between the quality rating that folks place on these facets compared to the importance. So looking at this matrix or matrices, the higher we go indicates the higher quality of a specific facet, and then the further right we go indicates the overall importance that folks place on it. So we highlight that bottom-right quadrant as those would be items or specific areas that were, relatively speaking, higher in importance, lower in quality. But I do think it's just as vital to point out the quadrant on the top left, excuse me, that would be areas of lower importance but high quality. And even on top of that top-right quadrant, you know, I think it's just as important, if not more important, to focus on the areas that excelled. These are areas that folks put high importance and high quality on. This included economy, health and wellness, as well as utilities.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Bouncing back a couple slides, the quality of the livability out of the 10 areas that this has broken down into, it appears that in seven out of 10, our residents are rating us, rating Glendale lower than residents nationally rate their communities. Is that what this is saying?
For those, blue marks, correct. So pink would be higher than the national benchmark, green similar, and then blue would be those that were considered lower than the national benchmark.
Okay. So seven out of 10, our residents are rating us, rating Glendale, lower than they, than nationally people rate their communities.
Looking at the breakdowns overall, yes, but I think it's important to consider these individually. Part of the reason why we break those down is because it's difficult to put the ratings overall for Glendale compared to the ratings overall, just as they are so different. So definitely, the way that you're framing it, yes, although I think it's vital to break those out and consider them individually as well.
Yeah, so even looking at them individually, three of them individually, we, our residents rate us about the same as most residents across the country rate their community. But in seven of these, our residents rate us lower than most residents across the country rate their community. Okay, just trying to make sure I get clarity, and I know some of these are not necessarily heavily weighted with the city's responsibility or our power to influence, but just trying to get a good sense of how residents feel about our community.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And that was actually a great segue, as this brings us into some more of those benchmark comparisons. So there's 122 individual items that residents were asked to provide feedback for. And looking at the national scale of those 122, 76 items were rated as similar to the benchmark, and 46 were considered more negative. And then we touched on this very briefly. Along with those national comparisons, we also elected to do more regional comparisons. And so this benchmark compares us to other communities, and all the communities within Arizona, New Mexico, Nevada, as well as Utah. And with those same 122 items looking regionally, five were more positive, 93 were similar, and 24 were more negative. And moving into the highlights of key findings, before jumping in, I just want to note that this is what stood out to us as interesting and key findings as survey researchers, and there's many, many other key findings and interesting points, especially being the experts of the community as you go through. The first of which, utilities are a top priority, as well as a strength for the Glendale community. And when asked about aspects of the community the city of Glendale should focus on in the next two years, around 92% stated that a focus on the overall quality of the utility infrastructure was either essential or very important, making it among the top priorities for residents. Along with this, 2/3 of participants rated the overall quality of the utility infrastructure as excellent or good, which was on par with the national average. So more or less, residents said that this was a very important area for them and an area that Glendale is excelling in.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Do you make any adjustment, because some cities offer Wi-Fi through, I mean, they have their own, they offer their own Wi-Fi service. Some cities offer other utilities. We offer, I guess sanitation, solid waste would be considered a utility, and water, that's really all we offer. But do you have any way to adjust that for what type of utilities the city offers, or it's just basically utilities question?
Council member, that's a great question. And so with the standardized approach with the NCS, we generally parse these all out and ask about individual utilities, and regardless of who has power over those, whether that be the city, or the county, or otherwise, generally, it stays the same with the language within the survey.
So the language is just broad, that are you happy with utilities, meaning also for Glendale residents, SRP, APS, other utilities that we have available in the city, not necessarily through the city, or just through utilities provided by the city? I guess I'm not sure what this means.
Sure. And this is, yes, more of a general utilities overall. And we can see a breakdown, not to get ahead of myself, but we do ask about specific utility, you know, such as utility billing, power, stormwater management. But it is a broad approach, so it is more of the quality of these utilities in general, whether it is provided by the city or a separate entity.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly. And again, great segue. Y'all are leading me through these slides perfectly. And so within the broader category of utilities, we can see that very strong ratings overall. About 8 in 10 residents stating that the quality of garbage collection and sewer services as excellent or good. The quality of power utility earned favorable marks from about 3/4 of residents, and utility billing, stormwater management, drinking water were all rated as excellent or good by about 2/3 as well. One thing I want to point out specifically here as well, we can see that the drinking water was rated lower than the national benchmarks, but compared to more of those more regional benchmarks on the right side here, was right on par with what we would expect to see regionally. And again, this legend here, pink will be higher, green will be similar, and blue will be lower than the benchmarks for both the national and those regional comparisons. Our second key finding, while the city's safety services receive positive ratings, residents do indicate some concerns about crime. And we can see that safety ratings largely receive positive reviews from respondents overall. Nearly 90% approve of fire services, 2/3's police services, fire prevention education, as well as right around that half or just over residents approving emergency preparedness and crime prevention. And when asked about the overall feeling of safety in Glendale, about half of residents evaluated that as excellent or good as well. And that, along with general feelings of safety, residents generally felt safe from fire flood, other natural disaster. We had nearly all residents being, or identifying as feeling somewhat very safe from that. We also had strong feelings of safety in folks in the neighborhood during the day, as well as those commercial areas during the day as well. Around half of residents reported feeling safe from property crime as well as violent Third key finding, survey participants are pleased with mobility in Glendale, though do identify opportunities for some additional focus. We can see here, about half of residents stated that the overall quality of Glendale's transportation was excellent or good. And this familiar breakdown, mobility scores provided by residents largely place the city in par with both national and regional comparisons, around that 2/3, ease of travel by car, ease of public parking, and ease of walking. And I do want to point out that the ease of travel by public transportation was higher comparatively in Glendale compared to those regional comparisons. And then looking at the quality of transportation services, we see very similar to both the national as well as regional comparisons, street lighting, bus or transit services, sidewalk maintenance. And I do want to mark here that, very consistent, what we saw on the previous slide, bus or transit services also rated higher in Glendale compared to those regional comparisons. Our fourth key finding, residents appreciate the community design of Glendale. And we can see here that, looking at the overall designer layout of Glendale's residential and commercial areas, is rated positively by about half of residents here as well, just over. And then looking at these different aspects of community design, we have those national or regional comparisons. Though I see, I unfortunately seem to have neglected to put the legend in this slide, although I can confidently say that those colors correspond with the same, higher, similar, or lower than, so my apologies on that. We can see very similar responses here. Folks were pleased with the design of the community, with around 6 in 10 awarding positive marks to the overall designer layout of residential and commercial areas, preservation of historical and cultural character of the community, and overall quality of new development. And we can see that those comparisons to both the national as well as regional benchmarks were right in par with each other as well.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
On these community design ratings, these are generally the outcomes that one would get from, as a result of our planning department and our zoning standards and development standards and those sorts of things. Is that what we're, that's basically, you know, so they're saying that that part of our community is working well, and that might be something our state legislature would be interested in knowing, is that, you know, we should be doing okay and planning our own community without their help. Thank you.
And part of that community design, we want to also highlight, you know, some areas of the community overall, specifically the inclusivity and engagement. We can see here that a strong number of folks, around 4 in 10, feel that Glendale is doing a great job of taking care of those vulnerable residents, and also doing a great job at attracting folks from diverse backgrounds, as well as valuing residents from those diverse backgrounds, focusing on the overall percent positive for me here, and we have some of those more specific breakdowns as well. And along with those standard questions on the NCS, Glendale did also ask some custom questions. So these are questions specific to Glendale at large. The first of which, we asked folks to rate how important, if at all, they thought it was for the city to focus on the following in the coming two years. We can see that there was a strong support for each of these items, ranging between that 2/3 to about 3/4, excuse me, essential or very important. This included increasing revenue to city services, assisting households in conserving water, improving city apps and websites for mobile use, increasing public awareness for news alerts, and positively marketing the city. And we can also see this second question, which was asking folks, again, on an important scale, to rate how important it was for the city, if at all, to consider in addressing certain aspects of homelessness in the community. aspects of homelessness in the community. And we can see very strong support for each of these as well. Around 90% of folks said that it was essential or very important to focus on partnering with nonprofits and healthcare providers to provide services, as well as providing access to healthcare, behavioral health, and substance abuse treatment. Right around that 80% fall in line with these other items, providing transitional housing, creating affordable permanent housing, and providing emergency shelter as well. And our final question, we also asked folks if there are any reasons, if at all, that prevented them or were hindrance for them engaging with the city overall. We saw the largest proportion, and I should mention as well, this was a select all that apply question. So instead of asking folks to indicate that one single area, we asked folks to indicate if there were multiple areas on this question. So that does differ from most of how we organize the NCS. But keeping that in mind, folks said information around these public meetings, events, and surveys was the largest hindrance for them in participating, followed closely by timing, as well as just general lack of interest. And we saw that it was very low proportion of residents thought that a hindrance was language barriers, transportation, or accessibility. And again, looking at the summary of conclusions, this is just what really stood out to us as survey researchers, being interesting, and many, many other ways that this data can be used and highlights to be pulled from this. I do want to note as well that we've been working with the city, and we do plan on digging deeper with department heads in the near future. And we do want to make sure that it's as easy as possible to continue to use Polco as an engagement tool. And we would like to note that we have over, or just around 300 folks who have voluntarily given us their email address and have answered Polco surveys or polls in the past and want to be notified when there's more. So once the city has any additional questions or areas that they'd like to dig deeper, 300 folks ready and willing to give their responses. And again, I just want to thank you all for having me in this afternoon and stop for any questions and be more than happy to flip through to any slides for clarification.
Any questions? For staff or management, will we be receiving the more granular data that backs up today's slide presentation?
Mayor, members of the council, yes. We plan, there is a full report, and in that report, it's very, very detailed. I forget how many pages long it is, but it's very long. But you'll, you can see exactly how the respondents kind of responded to each of the questions. So we're, we'll send that out. We wanted this to be kind of a higher level.
Absolutely.
Those of you who want to dig into it can dig into it. We have a lot, there's a lot of data there.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor. So what do you do with this information?
So as Mr. Dale Olio reported there, we're going to be taking the information in the larger report, which is 130 pages. And so we're going to be breaking those down. I'll be scheduling some timelines, not only with Polco, but the department heads as a whole. And we'll be really digging deeper into those high-level results that we saw. And so we'll be meeting with them, having some deeper dives, and potentially even some focus groups to find out some more information and be able to work on some strategies and initiatives that we might be able to do.
So, I mean, are you going to, Mayor, if I could, focus on certain areas? I mean, I don't know. I wonder, the utilities thing, I think is, you know, I mean, a lot of that is beyond our control. I mean, we bill for certain utilities in Glendale, a lot of other utilities people use. So when it's that broad, I don't know how that, you know, I just don't know how useful that information is and what we would do with it. That's what I'm curious about.
Mayor, members of the council, maybe I can just kind of reiterate something that Kayla said, but we will look at the more detailed question that, and attempt to pull out those things. Again, there's questions in the survey about schools, for example. I'm just using that as an example. Those are things that we don't control. And as the council member mentioned, there might be electric utilities and things like that that we don't control. But to the extent that the detailed information gives us better information about those things that are in our control, our plan is to dive into that, meet with department heads, really the purpose, and see what kinds of initiatives and what kinds of things we might be able to do to improve those scores or have any impact in that over time. The important thing, I think, about the Polco survey is while we're looking at it and we're saying, well, we're going to benchmark ourselves nationally and here regionally, the bigger thing is to benchmark ourselves over time. So by asking these questions and then doing some of these initiatives and looking to see if we can influence that in any way, we'll then survey again with the similar or same questions and see if we've had any impact in the things that we're doing. That's really kind of the purpose of benchmarking and getting this baseline survey in place.
I have a real quick question on follow-up on that one. So if you go back for a survey, again, do you go back to the very same people? Or do you just put it out there again?
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor. So going through the random sample, we'll do that same random sampling process. So there might be some folks who were asked this go-around in future iterations, but it will be a completely different sample.
Okay.
That was my question, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor. Survey is great, gives you all kinds of information, but it's useless unless we address the issues that are presented within the survey. I would be more interested, now that this survey is done, is to hear from various department heads, what initiatives they are going to devise to take up the issues discovered in the survey, the weaknesses within, of Glendale within the survey. At some point, will you be coming back to us and say, for example, people have difficulty getting information? So will you come back to us and say, well, we've developed these initiatives that we're planning on trying that will deliver more information to the public? Is that in our future? Otherwise, the survey is meaningless.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Clark, that's exactly what we're attempting to do with that deeper dive with the directors. We're going to be looking at those highlights, we'll be debriefing, and then we're also going to identify those areas that we're going to focus on, and we will definitely come back with you.
When, do you have any anticipated timeline? Is this something we'll hear about next year? Or have you developed a timeline of three months, or four months, or five months?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Clark, we will definitely start working on a timeline with that. This is the first time most of the department heads have seen the report, so we'll definitely get back with you on a timeline for when we plan to bring further results for you.
Thank you.
You didn't want to speak? You talking to me?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Go ahead.
There's, slides aren't numbered, but this one that has the four quadrants, where we, where we're tracking quality on one axis and importance on the other. It seems to me that, and this may be something that the council needs to, this may be an area in which we need to adopt goals or something about what we, where we want to move the city as far as the expectations of our community, because they're telling us right here in this particular chart, what they feel is most important, and also what they feel we're doing best at. And in some areas, there's correlation, but other areas, there's not. And so such things as mobility, natural environment, and safety are below the, what I would call below the line, but still of importance. And, and those should certainly move up. And, you know, we want everything to move up, but those areas at which our public has told us this is important, and we're underperforming, from their point of view. Other areas, education, arts, and culture, that's a favorite of mine, and I know maybe of another member or two, I don't know how much, education, you know, as a component of that drags that down, and maybe the more granular data, data will tell us, you know, maybe they feel great about education, but not so much about culture and arts, or maybe it's different than that. But I think the, I mean, it's all good data, but this really is what sums it up and tells us, you know, almost department by department where we need to be moving. So that a year from now, we can find more things that we're doing that are in the high importance and high, and high quality, and that nothing we're doing is in low quality, even if it's not that important to them. You know, the level of importance is how much resources we throw at something, I think, you know, to get it up over the line. But everything we do, everything we do, I'd like to think we do with the quality and that our residents would recognize. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council, again, thank you for the questions here today. I want to highlight just, you know, really one thing that Ms. Rio said is, one, we are going to go back and start looking and diving in to look at strategies. Now, there'll be some that'll be a little bit easier. Some of the communication, we think we can probably drill down and come up with some strategies quicker. But to say that in three months, we could come up with a crime strategy, like on property crimes, which we, which we'd like to see be improved, is probably a more complex issue that will take more, more time and study. The second thing is, I really want to highlight is that we think that we need to now get into a rhythm of doing follow-up polls on. That's really where you get a chance to see whether you're making a difference. And as we do this more often, you'll also get some of the variances of the time, the point in time in which you take the poll. So when you look at the national data that we're comparing to, it's a five-year window. So think that some of the, some of the people that we're comparing to, their citizens may have taken this poll back in 19, or in 2018, 2019, 2020, and where ours was done in '23. So the more you do it, you'll kind of get through some of the ups and downs and variances of what's going on in the community, and it'll provide you, I think, more reliable data as well. So we think this should just be an ongoing effort, like we do with our, with our employee engagement. Every, we do one, we're building a really a better database, and I think it's giving us more, more confidence in the strategies that are working and pivoting off of those that aren't working. So again, we appreciate the information. We will get that data set out to you, but likely will come back in our next budget and say, we'd like to continue, work with Polco and continue to track this information and see what kind of progress we're making. I think the goal setting is excellent, and I think that should be something we want to do as an organization, is really look at those areas we think that we can make a difference on, and let's set some realistic targets and see if we can't work towards those. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Manager, I guess, or Vicki. What do we have invested in this project so far? Just establishing the poll and the polling questions, getting the data and compiling it to this point we're at today?
Mayor, members of the council, we spent about $40,000 this year, and as you may recall, we have another $40,000 in the budget for next year. We don't really anticipate doing this exact survey again, because we need time, as Mr. Phelps referred to, to kind of get those things in place before we would have an impact. But Polco has tools where, and a couple of you asked about this, where we can take a deeper survey and do almost like a focus survey on one particular aspect, so we can define it better. And I'll just use utilities as an example. I know several years ago, we, we on our own did one for solid waste, and we learned a lot of things about what people care about in solid waste. Polco gives us some tools that we can do that, so that on those things where we identify something, we can dig a little deeper and find out statistically speaking, again, what, what aspect of it, of that particular item are maybe people more concerned about, or what aspects are we doing better on? And so that's what we'll be doing over the course of the year. And then we, we are thinking at this point, although it hasn't been 100% determined, that we would do this poll again in two to three years and see, give those initiatives a little bit of time to take place, and then see how, if we've had an impact on the survey, overall survey results.
Thank you, Ms. Rio. And I, for one, I'll say that I think it's $40,000 very well spent. I think, you know, if you can't, if you don't measure it, you're not going to be able to change it, and I think that we've got a good start here. I think I'd like to see us, you know, perhaps target doing the, this survey, the general population survey every couple of years, but then on the off-years, you know, pick an area or two and do that deeper dive, so that we can see, you know, what we're doing well, or what they wish we were doing better, and develop deeper, you know, more, more clear goals and programs to achieve that. Thank you.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Water Resources Update and Conservation of Water in Lake Mead.
Mayor, members of the council, here to help lead the next staff presentation will be our Director of Water Services, Ron Rio.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Today, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Today, we have with us Ms. Megan Sheldon, our, one of our Deputy Directors in Water, and Mr. Drew Swaskowski, our Water Resources Manager. And Drew will be making our presentation today, so I'll hand it off to you, Drew.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Good to see you all again. For the sake of time, I'm going to break. What we're going to be talking about today for information discussion are 2022 new water use, amount of water we did serve. Conditions on the Salt, oh, there we go. Conditions on the Salt River Project and Colorado River Systems, Guidelines for Management of the Colorado River System, and then a timeline for Colorado River Actions in 2023. And then lastly, for consensus, we're going to be looking at council consensus for voluntary participation in Reclamation Bureau of Reclamation System Conservation Program. And I'll explain that later in the, in the presentation. So for 2022, for our Glendale potable water use, we used about 39, almost 40,000 acre feet. That's a little less than our 2021 and kind of our average. We've been averaging about 43,000 acre feet per year over the last about 10 to 11 years. The reason for that was, every time we see a good monsoon like we had last year, or good precipitation, our water demands really go down. So that's reflective not in, it's also reflected in some of our conservation efforts too, but between the conservation efforts and our reduction in demands because of, you know, monsoon, nobody wants to water their lawns. So that was kind of showing for 2022 potable demands. Out of that, Central Arizona Project, and again, we have about always a 50-50-ish split between Central Arizona Project and, or 45, I should say 45% for both Central Arizona Project and Salt River Project. This time was a little heavier on the Salt River, or, excuse me, on the Central Arizona Project, about 49% of use of that demand. Salt River Project was 46%, and then groundwater was about 5%. So the Salt River Project conditions, as you all know, we had a great winter. I mean, if you're a skier, if you're an outdoorsman, if you have been by the Salt River, you see that darn thing flowing, still flowing. So we've had an exceptional 2022, 23 winter. The Salt Verde and reservoirs are completely full, 100% full. Last year at this time, they were 72%, and so they really did fill up. And water releases have occurred this year from the Salt and Verde River Systems. They're supposed to be spilling, I think, until mid this month, about the 15th, they're supposed to cease. But we've had a terrific, it just makes a water manager happy, his heart happy when I see that, so. Our water supply for SRP, like I said, the Roosevelt Lake filled, and also because when that fills, our NCS or our new conservation water also filled. And we have 27, 250 acre feet of that that we can use during times of Colorado River shortage and other, we can use that water anywhere, both on and off project of SRP, so we can use it on our CEP lands or our SRP. So it's a great benefit that that filled. You can see that little diagram on the right, when that fills, the whole lake has to fill first, or that Salt River Project conservation storage of about 1.3 million acre feet. And then on top of that is the new conservation space. So that did fill this year, and they actually got into some flood control space above that. And we really do benefit from the filling of these SRP reservoirs and from spills. So the water released from the dams, what we like to call spill water, is at no additional cost to Glendale and can be used anywhere within our service area. So I'll explain a little bit what we did this year to use that water. And we can use that instead of our Colorado River, so we can save some of our Colorado River water and use the spill water, which is free and can be used anywhere. So we did do that this year. So we did do that this year. So the Colorado River conditions, along with our Salt River Project, which is really kind of rare when we see both of those, are in good, good shape throughout the year, had an average of about 160% above average, which again is amazing because we have not had a year like this since about 2011. 2011 was a wonderful year also for water in the Upper Basins. So spring runoff into Lake Powell is expected to be above average. I think they said about 151% of average. However, soil conditions in the water set were pretty dry in the fall of 2022, and spring weather conditions are expected to be drier and warmer, but still, even with those, we're expecting about 151% increase in inflow into Lake Powell.
Hold on one sec. Go ahead.
When you talk about Lake Mead and Lake Powell, you always show us the diagram of the number of feet of elevation of water and how we're down. What do they expect the new elevation to be once this water flows into those lakes? Will it rise at all?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, yes, it is expected to rise greatly. Some are expecting over 50 feet in Lake Powell itself of rise. And so what this has done, and, and I'll explain a little later in the 2024 months, the April 2024 month study that the Bureau of Rec puts out, but it really has raised that significantly away from the critical levels
Yes.
for the power, well, I think I explained that last time, for the power production at Lake Powell and, and Glen Canyon Dam. So what it has done is really raised that and, and has bought us some time to actually do some things through, which I'll explain, some of the programs that are being enacted by reclamation, but it has bought us some time, both for Lake Powell and also for Lake Mead, because Lake Mead is, is also expected to rise over 30 feet. You're welcome. So the larger the infill into Lake Powell, and that large increase in water elevation will help transfer more water to Lake Mead from Lake Powell during the year. So we were going to have about a five to six million acre foot release from Lake Powell into Lake Mead. Now they're expecting 9.5 million acre feet to be released from Lake Powell into Lake Mead. That's significant, and that will really help Lake Powell. And like I said, help during this time where we have to figure something out so we don't get this same situation and relax against the law.
Quick question for you. So if they expect it potentially to raise up to 50 feet, what's a normal usage on a normal year? How much water is used? How many feet of water drop? Not acre feet, but how many feet?
Yeah. Mayor and Council, that's a great question. It really depends on how, you know, one, one component of that is the, kind of the, I would, I would say, the weather component to that. But typically, the transfer from Powell to Mead has a big, you know, because the more we transfer from Powell to Lake Mead has, has a role in that. I would say that we are looking at that to be good before we reach those critical water levels. We're saying now that we'll probably be OK through 2026, or up till 2026.
Actually didn't answer my question. Would you say that that's an average for one year, an average for, I'm just trying to figure out?
Yeah, I, I would, Mayor, I would think that it's probably, you know, in, in lieu of things, we have been seeing huge declines of like 10, 20 feet per year
Okay.
based on climate and based on use. So, you know, if, if it's about 40 feet or 50, you know, and we have 20 feet per year of decline, you know, maybe two, two, two and a half years of that, and that's the time it buys us through both the transfer of that water to Lake Mead and just the usage going down.
And I would assume that everything kind of remains normal and not, not extremes on either, either side?
Yes. You know, we're, we're still looking, and I'll explain a little bit, of some cuts that reclamation still may do to slow that down as we've had. When you look at the 2000, a really good example is 2011. When we've seen 2011, we saw that large rise, 30 to 40 feet in Lake Mead. Right after that, you saw that decline continue on, and that's just the overuse and overallocation of the Colorado River System. So what reclamation really wants to do is slow that down, so we don't have, to the point we were at the beginning of this year, we, we're not at that situation. So they really do want to help with those critical water levels and maintain a higher base in both, both reservoirs.
Okay. Go ahead.
That brings up another related question, but not totally related to your subject. Yesterday, there was a news article about West Valley Cities not having enough water, and they said there was a report issued. I don't know if you've read that report or not. I don't even know what report it is because they didn't refer to it by name, but they said that West Valley Cities did not have enough water for growth. Would you say that that applies to Glendale as well, or were they thinking more in terms of Buckeye and Peoria, perhaps?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I think what they're probably referring to is the West Valley. We had a, Bureau of Reclamation did a basin study, and they did some groundwater modeling. And that groundwater modeling did show a deficit of groundwater of about 260, 250,000 acre feet of groundwater to the year 2060. That would be an deficit. And also, the Hacienda on the far side of the White Tanks also had a similar report by the Department of Water Resources that showed about 4.1 million acre feet of deficit over 100 years in that basin. I, I think a lot of those outliers, you know, when you look at the plans for some of those outlier cities, they have a lot higher growth potential than Glendale does. They have a lot more vacant land. I think Glendale is in a relatively really good spot for water resources. We've planned, you know, we're drilling wells currently. We have, you know, a very strong portfolio. I think it's going to hurt everyone if the Colorado River goes away completely, as we thought it was getting close at the beginning of this year. However, I think the plans between our recharging water underground for future years, our infrastructure programs of putting in wells and looking at how we're going to transfer, I think the future also, within the next 10 years, we're going to start seeing direct potable reuse of effluent. The city of Phoenix has plans to do that, which we could be part of. Also, cities like Peoria are also doing the same thing. So when you start looking at some of the extra buckets that might be coming in, I think we're going to be in good shape. You're welcome. So the last thing, I think, on this slide is just, you know, we've had a very favorable winter, and CAP was quick to point out that after all of these, if you look at historic, after a really good winter comes a really poor winner. I'm hoping that's not going to happen. Two consecutive great winters would be great, but one favorable winner doesn't really restore the Colorado River System, nor probably would three in a row. So we have over a deficit of 2 million acre feet per year that we're looking at for that system. So we're, we're going to have to do something, and I think that's what I'll be explaining to you later for the Bureau of Reclamation and their plans. So the management of Lake Mead, I know I presented a lot of things to council and mayor that controlled the Colorado and kind of the cuts. The first thing was the 2007 interim guidelines for Lake Mead and Lake Powell. They really established the cuts and the shortages back in 2007. As the Colorado situation started to get worse, that wasn't enough. So in 2019, we came up with a drought contingency plan, and that was looking closer at how do all the communities, including California, Mexico, get involved, Nevada, get involved with actually reducing their water use to make sure that Lake Powell and Lake Mead do not crash? Well, 2019 drought contingency plan wasn't enough, so last year, we came up with the 500-plus plan, and council approved, mayor and council approved the 500-plus plan where we gave 350 acre feet back to Lake Mead. We found out quickly that that didn't help either, because I think there was about almost 100,000 acre feet given back in that program. We wanted 500, but it was just pretty tough. So that didn't help. So now, what the Bureau of Reclamation and the Department of Interior have done, they've stepped up and they proposed this environmental, supplemental environmental impact statement, and it's a draft right now. And I'll be explaining that a little bit more. That's actually going even deeper into the cuts and looking at trying to protect those critical water levels for energy production, so we don't get down to that horrid term Deadpool, so, where we can't get anything out of the lakes, out of the reservoirs. So the recent actions by the federal government and what they were trying to do early this year in January, reclamation did ask for the basin states to produce a plan to reduce water use between 2 to 4 million by the end of January. I know we really worked on it, Arizona worked on it, along with Nevada and California and all the Upper Basin states, too. So the six basin states submitted one plan, and California submitted their own, and they were very, very different. The California plan was pretty much going on priority of the river, which really gave Arizona nothing, and we were ending up with a dry CAP canal, while California had, had ample water even during very low periods of time in Lake Powell and Lake Mead. So what happened then was in April, reclamation said, now we need to do something else, because there was no, there was no single plan at the end of January that, that came and showed us the way. So the draft supplemental environmental impact statement by reclamation really wanted to look at, how are we going to do this? How are we going to cut the Colorado River use to look at our 2 to 4 million acre foot deficit per year? Then came the April 24 month study, which just came up. They both really came out about the same time, and I'll explain. The April 24 month study, of course, we have two. We have the April, and then we have the August. The April kind of gives us a precursor to what the end of water levels will look like in Lake Mead and Lake Powell, and then the August is what they're going to be. It's their best modeling effort. So the April really looks a, a great improvement because of all the inflow into both Lake Powell, the transfer of Lake Powell to Lake Mead. So we are actually going from a tier 2A, which we're currently in, according to the April 24th, back up to a tier one. So that much water level rise, we're actually seeing improvement in the elevations, improvement in the overall drought contingency plan. And that's the drought contingency plan, that those guidelines are coming from those tiers. So we're going back up into a tier one. Some of the upcoming actions, that draft supplemental environmental impact statement, which I'll, I'll refer to as the SEIS. This SEIS, they're going to finalize that in summer and fall, and so they're looking at comments from the basin states right now. How can we agree? So they did come out with a draft. The draft had three actions. One was no action. One was really following that California plan. Alternative one was following the California plan, which really gave us no water during a deep shortage. And then the third alternative was that six basin state alternative, where we were really trying to spread those shortages among all states and among all Colorado River users, to be fair. We do not know at this point. I know Arizona and some, California and Nevada and some of the other basin states are really trying to get together and work this out. So we don't want reclamation, of course, to steer that. We would rather be steering that. At this point, we really do not know what's going to come up. We're kind of in the dark. We just are hoping that they can come up with a better plan than the California plan, because that is not good for Arizona. And I know the Department of Water Resources, the Central Arizona Project, and the Governor's Office all have said that is unacceptable to the state of Arizona, the alternative one, the California plan. So in August 23, will come the August 24 month study, and that will show us the final conditions, end of year conditions on Lake Mead and Lake Powell, which really will show what shortage tier we should be in. However, I think the SEIS by reclamation will be trumping that, whatever they come up with. So if the SEIS says, all right, we're going to do these things in 2024 to kind of help the decline and the, I should say, the, the, yeah, the decline of, of water in the Colorado River System, that will probably trump anything the August 24 month study says.
Clarify, help the decline or help curb the decline?
Mayor, Councilmember, it will help curb
Okay.
the decline. Yeah, we would hope that it would
Like I said, wind lever faucets are
Yes. It, what, what I think they're going to do is give us some type of shortage. We would be cut 15, 20, 25% of our Colorado River use, thus helping to establish better water levels and less of a decline within Lake Powell and Lake Mead. And then in fall of '23, Glendale makes the preparations for our 2024 water plan and water year based on reclamation's SEIS and the 24 month study. So I want to explain a little bit about the program to, to protect Lake Mead, and this is what we're asking consensus on. And this is a voluntary program for the Colorado River to conserve water in Lake Mead, and they're looking at conserving over 100,000 acre feet through this program. Some of the funding for this is coming from the Inflation Act and some other government funds. So this is a Bureau of Reclamation program. It's called the System Conservation Program. So what the city has been doing, as I said, since we can use that SRP spill water for free, and we can take that onto Colorado River areas, we've been pushing that up to the Colorado River and, and replacing our CAP currently, because it was a, a smart thing to do when we look at how much water we can save of our Colorado. In the beginning of the year, we thought we were going to have a mid-year cut. By that, we thought we were going to be cut, because if we didn't have a good winter, reclamation would have stepped in and said, we have to cut 50%, we have to cut 60%. So we were really preparing that and saying, hey, if we can save Colorado River water, this is fantastic, we can push up that spill water. Under this program, the good news of every acre foot that we do save and that we, we do not use, we get $400 for. It is a three-year program on reclamation, and it's up to seven, I think this is on a future slide, so I'm stepping ahead of myself, but it's up to 7,000 acre feet per year, and it wouldn't hinder our future orders for Colorado River water. So like I said, up to 7,000 Colorado River water in '23 to '23, '25. The good thing about this contract, let's say we get a, a big shortage, let's say reclamation goes crazy on us and says we have to cut 50% next year, we don't have to participate. This is only if we do have the water, if we have some good conditions on SRP lands again, where we can take that water and push it off. So for 2023, we have been using that spill water. Right now, I think we're up to about 5,000 acre feet of saved CAP water, and we could possibly use some of that water that got restored in our NCS water in Lake, in Roosevelt Lake, up to 1,000. So that could make up our seven. I think we're probably going to be more around 5,000 acre feet, though. So at 400 acre feet, we would receive up to 2.8, if we use, of course, 5, it would be 2 million, so about 2 to 2.8 million acre feet of money that we could get back in revenue. And also, since on our order, we'll have to revise if, if council approves this, we would have to, we would basically amend our Colorado River order of that 5,000, saying we would be using 5,000 less, and we wouldn't get charged for that 5,000 acre feet at about $200 per acre foot or a little more. So, you know, we're saving money on both ends of this if we, if we do do the program. That money, if approved, would probably go back into our infrastructure, looking at wells and trying to firm up when we do have this, this more of a shortage on the Colorado when it's declared.
Let me ask you a question real quick. Last, I don't know, probably six weeks, maybe eight weeks, SRP's been running water down the ditch because they don't want floods. I don't know if that's finished, if they've stopped it, or if they're still doing that currently right now. Is there any way set up for Glendale to be able to take advantage of that? I mean, can we take SRP water and then convert it into aquifers? Is that set up? I know water don't run uphill, but have you guys done some sort of magic thing where you can allow that to happen?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, that water is, is really water that goes by the Granite Reef. So Granite Reef, it's spilled from Roosevelt and from Bartlett Dams. So that water travels down both the Verde and, and Salt River to the Granite Reef Diversion Dam. Then that water that is spilled over, you know, through the dam, so because of the runoff, the high runoff, they don't want to fill the, of course, totally fill in the flood, that water is then from Granite Reef diverted into our canal. So that is really spill water. That's water that is really the same water that then tops over Granite Reef, and there's not enough capacity in the canal, so that tops over and then goes, goes over. So we are, in essence, using some of that water. The other water that goes through is really hard to use, and, you know, we've looked at it. I know when I was at the Department of Water Resources, we looked at that. It's a good benefit to the aquifer because it's recharging our groundwater throughout the entire area, but there are some surface water laws that, that kind of restrict some of the use of that. But we are using that spill water, though. But we are using that spill water, though, the water coming over, you know, throughout the dam, and putting that in our canal. So, and what we don't use, like I said, is spilled over Granite Reef and then continues down the Salt River.
Nothing makes it back up to Waddell, though, because it's literally too far. Okay, go ahead.
So this voluntary program, the conservation program, is it, so is it city by city? Or is this something that the state, the states would, because all the negotiations have been taking place at the state level? So I'm just a little confused. I mean, I guess with the, once, if enough cities opt in, then is this, I'm just curious how this is all going to work when you go city by city? Because there may be some cities that say no? I don't know. But how would that work?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, it is voluntary. They have reached out to the cities, and so many cities are participating. City of Phoenix, Scottsdale, I think Gilbert, Chandler, there's a number of cities that are participating in that. Since it is voluntary, it's really up to that city to look and say, hey, do we have any excess water this year that we could, you know, through SRP or other methodologies that we could put into this program? So it's really a Reclamation program. It had to get approved by the CAWCD Board, which is governing CAP, so that, they did approve this program through that. So it's a joint venture, a little bit of CAP, because they have, of course, they run the orders. And so it is a little bit between CAP and the Bureau of Reclamation.
Well, I would imagine some of the, some cities just don't have the infrastructure to even be able to participate. I mean, I think that would probably be part of the problem for some cities, is we don't have the ability to move the water. So, I mean, you know, Glendale has the advantage of having, you know, quite a bit of infrastructure, SRP infrastructure in our city, but cities that don't have that, so that, I'm just, like I said, I'm just curious. So we think this will help us at the table for future negotiations, that it's just another thing that we're doing, at least the majority of the Arizona cities that can, to voluntary, voluntarily conserve more water, put it back into Lake Mead.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, yeah, we actually got kudos for our participation last year in the 500-plus plan. And I think that will continue, that we can do. But you're correct, and other cities really can, like Peoria, they have no method to push, push up. Where we, for years, have known that, you know, in our CAP area, we had to do something to get the water up there, because we have no other, no other source besides groundwater. So-
Right. Yeah, that does make a lot of sense. And then, so is this something that's an Arizona program? Or is this being like done in, no, Utah surprisingly is a pretty big user of Colorado River water? Is this being duplicated anywhere else?
You know, it is a Reclamation program. So I do believe there are some, a few California entities actually participating. I think Metropolitan Water is participating in this, too. So I think anytime a lot of folks see money, too, you know, they can, they try to find ways. So, but I do think, yeah, it is not only just Arizona, but I don't think anyone in Utah or Nevada, of course, Nevada has such a small appropriation of water, but I think some entities in California are.
And maybe you said this and I missed it, where does the money come from?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, it comes from, part of it is from the Inflation Act. Inflation, you know, that, what was it, 4 billion?
Inflation Reduction.
Yeah, Inflation Reduction Act, yeah. So some comes from that, and then some separate funding from Reclamation.
Okay, thank you.
Before I ask for consensus yet, hold on, Ray. No, you're next.
So when we participated in the 500-plus plan, we did, not everybody did, we didn't meet the goal that was set. So the water, that was last year. So normally, if we have CAP allotment that we don't actually need to put into the pipelines to get to people's houses, we take that and recharge it. But last year, we decided, no, we'll participate in this plan. So is that, did we store water in Lake Mead? Or did we, in essence, sell water back to Reclamation? And it's no longer our water in Lake Mead from last year?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, last year, that was actually kept in Lake Mead. So that 350 acre feet was actually conserved within Lake Mead.
But it no longer belongs to us.
Correct. It no longer belongs to us, and it's just part of that conservation, system conservation.
Right. So it's not like we decided to store it in Lake Mead as opposed to store it in our own aquifer. We, it no longer belongs to us. Is that the same plan that we're being, same concept for this time? So it's, we're not storing our water in Lake Mead, we're selling our water back to the system at $400 an acre foot?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, that's a good way to put it. Yeah, so essentially, we've looked, we were going to store some of our CAP this year. Unfortunately, during wet years, it's really hard. SRP, all their storage facilities go away. The big one is SRPGSF, that we wanted to store 1,000 acre feet. They told us in the beginning of the year, it's too wet, we can't do it. So, and some of their other recharge projects around for CAP recharge projects have not been, they're thinking of actually closing some of those down. Because if we're under a shortage, how can we recharge access? This year might be a little different, they might keep a couple of those open. But as we start getting less and less opportunities because of shortage, there's no reason to recharge. So, and it's pretty expensive to keep one of the recharge facilities open. So they've been kind of shuttling some of their, scuttling? Yes, closed, I'll say, some of their recharge facilities throughout. So in this case, because of our spill water and the kind of that unique situation that we had, and we had that water, we thought this would be a better way to do it for this year. We'll have to look at it each year, and I think we'll probably explain that to council each year, too, every time we have a plan of, and Mayor, how we're going to be looking at, how we're going to progress with any excess water that we have. But for this year, Water Services, I think, feels that it's the best way to do it because of the opportunity that we've had with, you know, with the spill water and SRP situation, such a great year.
Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question. You partly answered it regarding the California cities that were also joining this program. I know California's had a very, very wet year this year. Did that contribute to those cities being able to do this? And has it impacted the demand that California water has had on Lake Mead with that excess water?
Mayor and Councilmember Melner, I believe it has. You know, I think California isn't looking at where they were in the beginning, or I should even say at the end of last year, where they were looking at major deficits. I really do think that was probably Metropolitan's reason, that they actually have more from the California Water Project this year to get. As far as other communities, you know, I think the CAP demands, or excuse me, the Colorado demands for like agriculture are probably pretty consistent, especially like the Rio Irrigation District, which is one of the largest, of course, irrigation districts in the United States, and I think the highest user of Colorado River water on the system. I think their demands are pretty much always the same. I don't think any of that rainfall in Northern California really affected them. So I'd probably say that it's probably about the same use for CAP, even though they had a very wet winter, except some of those cities that receive, like I said, the state water project water in California.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask, what would, what would we, if there's a consensus, and I would imagine the money is, you know, like at the end of the year, the, they, you know, run the numbers and send the money to the city of Glendale, what would we do with the money? And I also wanted to ask, because I know a family that, you know, farms in California, and I thought that it was coming from the state of California. There's been a big push for farmers to, all the family that we have that grew almonds has gotten rid of all of the almonds, because it's a huge user of water. So are we, as a city or as a state or anything, incentivizing, you know, people to grow lower water use crops, too? Because it's a pretty big expense, and I think they got some sort of subsidy to be able to do that. But they tore out all the almond trees, and some of them are growing grapes and blueberries and things that are much lower water use. So I know, you know, in farming, that's a huge issue, is that some crops use a lot of water, some are way more tolerant to lower water use. So is that in any way part of this money, part of this thing?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, you know, in a way, I don't think it is. It's just, we're really just trying to, through this program, trying to prop up both Lake Mead to make sure that it doesn't reach those critical levels, and really to help in the whole system. I think underlying that is a lot of the conservation. I think, you know, if you look at CAP, some of the programs, there's a program called Endrip, which is kind of underground tubing, which looks at reducing the waste in agriculture. So I think people are really starting to look at, well, if we have to, and we're going to really get hit on the Colorado system, river system, how do we, how do we look at those things? And how do we look at better agricultural practices? You know, even vertical farming, those type of things, to really change. I know for Yuma, Yuma's very interested, of course, in the water for all the lettuce and all the winter crops they grow. So they're very, and they have one of the highest priorities in the state. And so they have been kind of arguing about the cities getting the water versus them. And so it is a really big issue. And I think the better we can make, and the more efficient that we can make our water for agriculture, the better off Arizona will be, too. So hopefully, those innovations will be coming. But I don't think this program is looking at that. There's other, other programs within.
I've seen some of the arguing down at the state legislature about alfalfa. And I know, you know, there used to be a lot of alfalfa grown around here. I don't know how much anymore. I mean, I know it's a great crop for a farmer, because you get paid over and over and over again when you grow alfalfa. But I know the Saudi Arabian farming operation is here, because they are not allowed to grow alfalfa there, because it consumes so much water. So I don't know if we're, like I said, I mean, I know that's going to be another, a fight that we don't have to fight. But I mean, at some point, we're going to have to look at saying, you know, some of these crops just use too much water to be viable here in the desert. And so I was just curious if some of these programs are going to turn into some ways to incentivize or subsidize farmers who have to convert their farming operations over to lower water use farming?
Yeah, and Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, yeah, that really is the argument of groundwater that they're using versus like the Yuma folks that are using that on river Colorado system water. And really, it's kind of all the same mixed in, but we have to make it efficient on both ends.
There's only one aquifer. I know that's, I mean, you know, everybody that's using groundwater is all getting the groundwater from the aquifer. So it doesn't really matter if it's coming from here or out there where they're farming out in the Gila Bend area, wherever that is. But it's not like it's a separate, you know, pocket of water. It's one, it's the aquifer. It is, it is all of it. So, and I know that that's, you know, we have to protect that, because we can't have that all consumed, because then we're really going to have no backup. So, thank you.
Okay, so your request is to enter into an agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation, exchange up to 7,000 acre feet for $400 per acre foot, correct?
That is correct.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Next.
We're not doing item number three? Is it correct? Item number four?
That is correct. Discussion of a potential 2023 special election for geobond authority.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report will be Assistant City Manager Nikki Reos.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is a discussion about the potential for a geobond election this year in the fall of 2023. The start of this presentation is some review information for the council and the public about general obligation bonds in general. And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Gibson. And then Mr. Brent Stoddard, Deputy City Manager, is going to join us from the podium and talk about the actual election process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Levi.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Our agenda for today will be a brief overview of geobonds, and we'll talk about a survey related to this election, potential ballot question drafts, and then we'll be seeking council discussion and consensus to call for a 2023 special election, and additional discussion of the draft ballot questions. You have seen this slide before. This is general obligation bonds. We'd like to remind the public as well what general obligation bonds are. So they're paid for using secondary property taxes. As you remember, the council has a resolution on a flat levy. General obligation bonds must be authorized by the voters, and there are constitutional limits to general obligation bonds. Bonds are based on the net assessed full cash value, and the outstanding geo-debt may not exceed 20% for combined water, sewer, public safety, streets, transportation, open space, and parks. And it can exceed 6% for general municipal purposes. Property tax, the primary levy can be used to support any general fund expense. It's an allowable 2% increase per year. The secondary levy is for, as we stated previously, debt service on our general obligation bonds only. And currently, we have assumed a flat levy based on that council priority. There is a little bit of growth in that secondary, driven primarily off of growth, new construction or new construction being added to the tax rolls. Additionally, the council has a debt management policy that was adopted by the city council in October of 2020. That policy, the city council will not authorize the issuance of any new geobonds if the levy amount required to pay the debt service on the existing geobonds, plus the new geobonds exceeds the amount of the current year's tax levy, plus any amount up to 2% per year from new growth. And that's really just that new property that's added to the tax rolls. And that's represented by this equation here, existing geo-debt service plus new geo-debt service must be less than the current levy plus that 2%. And this is, can be, this equation is represented here in this slide with a history of our secondary property tax over the last nine, 10 fiscal years. And as you can see, that growth is just growth based on new construction. This slide represents our current geobond debt service capacity. This is what we pay between our principal and interest on those geobonds that are currently issued. This slide represents our existing geo-debt, plus any new debt using current authorization that we have, plus any new debt that we would need new authority for. So those are represented by those different colors, the blue, the orange, and the gray. And with that, I'll turn the remainder of the presentation over to Mr. Stoddard.
Great, thanks, Levi. I think it's the next slide. So the, for the next section of the presentation, we wanted to walk you through the remaining bond authority that the city has and what the anticipated needs are. Following that, we would go over some of the polling data that we conducted to see what level of support existed among Glendale for the different categories. And then following that, we'll talk about some of the recommendations that staff brought forward to your bond committee, and then look to the council to give some consensus on how you'd like to proceed. So one of the first things that we look at when studying need to go to the voters and ask for bond authority is what's remaining and what those anticipated needs are. As you can see on the chart for the landfill, there's over $4.5 million still remaining. So there's not an immediate urgent need in the next few years to approach that. In Parks and Recreation, we have a $6 million amount available. But you can see that the anticipated needs are about $84 million. So that's one of those categories that we'll need to look at here in the future for an election, depending on the direction the council provides today. In Streets, you can see that we're virtually totally out of authority there, $324,000 remaining. You have to have a minimum of $1 million just to even issue debt. So that's obviously an immediate priority. Flood control is okay for now. Recently, the county upped their contributions that they're making to flood control projects, and so that will allow us to stretch that remaining amount that we have out even further. Open space and trails, you can see a $49 million remaining with an anticipated need of $21 million. This is an area where we had potentially looked at asking the voters for permission to repurpose some old authority. Based on the feedback that we got, we're no longer going to be recommending that as a strategy. In Public Safety, you can see the number there of future needs, $158 million. That includes the 10-year CAP plus some additional facilities in our Sports and Entertainment District, as well as improvements to training facilities and that forensic laboratory that has been discussed. has been discussed. And then last on the list is the library authority, which is sufficient for now for what's planned over the next few years. So with that, with council direction, we brought on a consultant to go out and conduct a survey to a professional scientific survey out in the field. This was a survey of, a scientific survey of likely voters. So different from the Polco survey that you talked about earlier today, which was every resident in the city. This specifically focused on a survey of likely voters. They, it was conducted the week of February 27th. There were, it was an exercise. We asked the consultant to give us a survey with the results of a confidence level of 90, 95%, so minus 5% margin of error. So we went out and they surveyed 400 respondents, and that may not sound like a lot, but that statistically, in the mathematical equations that they do, is actually a pretty significant number, which is why they can get to a 95% number. For most local polling that they do, it's usually no larger than 300. The statewide races that they called during this last election cycle that they tracked were 500, around 500, maybe 600 individuals statewide is what they would poll to get the confidence number of, in those cases, 96%. So as, as they went out, yeah, thanks Levi for that. Next slide. Some of the bond priorities. So they were given the option of which was priority, second priority, and you can see that public safety and streets and transportation kind of flip flopped depending on whether someone listed it as their first priority, then it'd be, streets and transportation became their next priority, or if they listed streets and transportation first, then public safety became their, their next priority. So combined, public safety and street transportation carry a significant amount of the weight in the, the top priorities. So when you drill down into the survey and the actual bond questions, and they were asked a, a question exactly how you would see it on a ballot with the language, 80, for an $82 million bond for streets, 67.8 were indicated support. And for a $78 million for public safety, you can see 66.5% support. And then you could see the rest of the responses there for the other categories. When talking about specific projects, streets and intersection safety improvements.
Mr. Stotter, hold on a second. So back up to parks and flood control and repurposing, there's no dollar amounts on those.
Yeah. So we did, in the survey, they did ask specific dollar amounts on those. We were just trying to summarize. Essentially, what we're going to be recommending is the top two. So that's why we kind of put it on there. Let me see if I have the... Yeah, hold on one second, I'll pull it up. So parks, shall the city of Glendale be authorized to incur up to $84 million? So that was parks. We got public safety already, we got transportation. Flood control, shall the city of Glendale be authorized to incur up to 20 million?
Yeah. That was my two main questions.
So you can see streets and intersections were two of the top projects as, as people had an opportunity to look at them as, as individual projects, not just kind of lumped together. Also, police department, forensic laboratory, fire and police training academies, and then updating and modernizing the stations that the, that our public safety personnel use. So with that, staff began to kind of formulate around some potential recommendations that we'd bring forward to the bond committee and to the city council. And that would be to move forward with a 2023 election focused on two bond questions, the top two that had scored, transportation for 82 million and public safety for 78 million. We were recently able to confirm with both the county and the city clerk's office that a 2023 election would be an all mail ballot. That would mean that every registered voter in the city would get a ballot in their mailbox, regardless of whether they were on the permanent voting mailing list. If you are registered, you get a, you get a ballot. And I think that many of you are probably familiar with that. And then in addition to moving forward with that 2023 election for transportation and public safety, of course, recognizing the future need for some of these in parks, flood control and libraries, continue to be aware of what that looks like and potentially even conduct similar polling in 2024 to provide that information back to the council. So as part of kind of consolidating around those two, we also then, the language that we use for those ballots has to be approved. And so Finance Department, working with our bond counsel and others in our attorney's office, drafted what would be the, the bond, the potential bond questions. And you can see pretty standard language for the $82 million. And if you go to the next one for public safety, of course, the actual language itself is, is a little bit longer, those first two paragraphs, those first two with the bullet points. And then there's a big block of text that's more of kind of statutory legal language that is associated with those, which is why you see the, the word abridged on there. So on April 18th, a presentation was made to...
Hold on.
A question with related to public safety. The need, I'm just going to reflect on the differences. The need in streets and parking in the chart you showed us was for about $81 million in the future. And the bond is, election would ask for 82 million. However, public safety, the need is for 155 million, yet it looks like we have that request and we're only asking for 78 million. Why the difference between the need and the ask?
Mayor, members of the council, that sort of third column there on that slide, if Mr. Gibson wants to go back to it, tells you how much we already have. So we have already 86, almost 87 million remaining.
You're right, I didn't look at that.
And so the difference between those two numbers is, it's around 72 million, but we asked for 78 because that's closer to the number we asked for the, the last time. So we have a little bit of rounding in there, just to be on the safe side.
You're right. I didn't look at that. Thank you.
Mayor, does anybody know the amount in our CIP that, for streets and parking that were, that were in the CIP for this year that we don't have the capacity to fund? Does anybody have a ballpark figure on what that dollar amount is? Is it 20 million, 20, whatever it is?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't know what it is for only one fiscal year. I would have to get back to you on that information. What I know is what is on this slide, which is it's 80, almost 82 million for the 10-year period. I, I don't have it year by year at this point.
All right. Well, let's just divide it by 10 and say it's somewhere around 10, 12 million probably for this year. I'm just wondering, I mean, I, I hesitate to, to, public safety is going to be fine for another year? I mean, there's no immediate need for the public safety money. They've got, what's the number? 86 and a half million dollars to move forward with the forensic lab. And I'm not sure even what the project is for gripstick. Are we going to build another gripstick? I'm not even familiar with what we're even, I think, at least the people I've been talking to in other cities, it's really important to know what the projects are. And I don't even know what the projects are. Like, what are we, what are the projects that we're going to be doing? And why wouldn't we, since we were shown that we had all this cash on hand, why wouldn't we just fund streets for one year and go out for a bond election next year instead of trying, because parks is very low on money. We're literally down to $6 million, and I'm not quite sure whether that includes the money going to Murphy Park for, or is that going to be cash for the renovation down here? I just don't know why, there's other options besides going out for a bond election this year and again next year. So two years in a row, I don't know if we have any statistics on how successful cities are that go out one year and then they go out again the next year. I think we could bridge the gap for streets is what I'm saying and go out for a bond election next year. I don't know whether we've asked that question or if we have any data on how successful we think we're going to be next year. But I think we've got enough money on hand to fund one year and, and then do a survey, take this survey data and roll it into another survey next year and see parks scored very low. So, and I think part of the problem is we're not telling people what we're going to do with the money. And that's, I think, at least as far as what you're asking us today is, I don't know, what, what is the project for police training facility? Are we going to remodel a gripstick? Is that what, that what it is? Or I honestly, I don't even know.
Yeah, do you want to?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not really sure what the question was, if you want to, there was a lot of statements there.
I'll ask them one at a time.
Which were questions, so.
One, one at a time. We do have the money on hand to fund at least one year of transportation. So I'm not even sure why we're going out for a special election when we're being asked to put almost $6 million for sports fields. We've got the money to go ahead and fund street projects this year. And I believe, because it's capital, probably ARPA money that we have is avail, is even eligible for some of that stuff, for safety improvements and things like that. So I'm not sure why we're, did the bond committee say, let's go do this? Because I listened to that meeting and I did not hear them say that. I listened to the whole bond committee meeting on audio and heard everything that was said. And it was basically like, here's the staff's recommendation, we need you to vote. So I just don't know how much community input we've had and whether they even realize that we have enough. They probably don't know, because I didn't know either, how much money we had on hand to be able to close the gap. And were they asked, should we go, do you think we should go out for a bond, a special election, pay whatever it is, a couple hundred thousand dollars for a special election, and then try another bond election in a, in a regular election cycle next year? I don't know that there's even that discussion, I didn't hear it happen. And I know that was their first meeting since they were formed in October. So I just feel like we don't, we're not giving all the information. And at public, we're going to need the public behind us to be able to get these bonds passed. And I think that's the mistake we made last time, was just telling them what, what we wanted them to do and not having, I mean, other cities have bond committees for their streets, and they have bond committees for their parks, and they have specialized bond committees so people can serve in the interest of the things the bonds are trying to get passed, instead of having some, saying, here's a cake, it's chocolate, I hope you like it. That's kind of what I heard at the, when I listened to the bond committee meeting. So I'm just saying, like, what was, where was the decision made to offer them one option was a special election in 2023 and here's the bond language? Who made that decision? I guess is really what my question is.
So Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, there were, there were three options given to, so staff came forward at that April bond committee meeting with a recommend, a staff recommendation to call for a 2023 special election. The two bonds, the $82 million for streets, $78 million for public safety, and to endorse the, the draft language that had been provided. And there were kind of three options that were provided. Endorse staff's recommendation that they had brought forward, not endorse staff's recommendation and do something different, or to just not do anything at all. And the bond committee's recommendation was to support staff's recommendation to bring that forward to the council, along with the bond language that had been presented to them.
Who made, Mayor, may I, who made the recommendation? Because it didn't come through the council, and there really was no alternative to, you know, here's, here's the, they went through the, the survey, and then they made the staff recommendation. I, like I said, I listened to the entire hour and 25 minutes or whatever the meeting was. I heard the whole conversation. And there were no alternatives, whether, would you, do you, do you think it, it's wise to go out for a special election? And, or do you think we should wait until next year? Are there options for getting through what we need to get through this year, which obviously the elephant in the room is, transportation, streets and parking is out of money? But I didn't hear any of that presented. So I'm just curious, where, how was that decided? This is what's being presented to the bond committee?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, this is the city manager's recommendation. It is your budget, however. We believe that the greatest need is in the two areas that we're recommending, and the polling data is indicated with the way their language was framed in the polling question, that there was broad support for that. We still have time to narrow down and to work with the council to prioritize projects within that area. This just was strictly our recommendation, and that's all it is, is a recommendation. This is really the, you know, the, the body would need to decide on all these questions that you are raising. But it was based on us looking at the 10-year CIP, looking at our available funds, and, and believing this was the right timing at which to do this.
So I guess my point is, is that in order to have a successful bond election, at least, because I've been talking to a lot of different cities that have repeatedly have successful bond elections since, the only one I've been through is 2020, is that citizen engagement, and I didn't see, what was the purpose of the bond committee? They were presented with a recommendation, no specific projects. They were presented with a recommendation, either to accept our recommendation or not accept our recommendation. There was, they really weren't, what was the purpose of the bond committee?
Mayor, members of the council, what we discussed with the bond committee regarding their role is that if the council decides today to go ahead and give staff a consensus to move forward with an election, then we would spend the remaining time with the bond committee doing that preparation as to what are the projects? What is the need for the project? Why are these projects important? What do they do for the city? And educate the bond committee on those aspects. Last time, we did that a little bit differently. We spent a lot of time on the projects, and then we left the committee, I feel, a, a little bit just hanging there, like, well, now we're in the election, didn't necessarily know what they were supposed to do. And so we flipped things around a little bit this time. We went to the public first to find out what their priorities were. We're making this recommendation, which we made to the bond committee. And then we explained, and the bond committee understood that from that point forward, if the council decides to call for the election, we would spend the time educating them on exactly those things. What are, what are the bonds? What are the needs? What are the various projects? And make them experts in those projects so when they're out in the community, they could talk and be educated about the various projects.
Mayor, okay, but you're talking about having an election in four months. How, how many meetings and how much education are you, we, I just don't even think we have time to, to actually get enough momentum behind this election. Really don't. And then you want to, and then, you know, we still going to have to get other bonds passed. And I, you know, I mean, I think it's really, really ambitious to think we're going to have enough time to do this, to get the public educated. The bond committee's had one meeting. That's it. One meeting. And now we're going to roll out for a bond election, that we're going to educate them up on streets projects and, and how much time between now and the ballot will be going out in October? It's half, we're halfway through May. I just feel like there's, this is, this is, I honestly feel like this is doomed. I really don't think we're thinking this through. I think we could do a lot better job if we pause, say we've got the money to fund our streets projects for this year, and we concentrate on next year, and we build this bond committee out like successful cities do, and say, who wants to help with the park bonds? Form a committee to help with the park bonds. Who wants to help with the streets bonds? Who has got these concerns? And these people are specifically interested in this area. And then they go out in the committee, in the community and try to sell this, rather than saying, you're going to have to learn, you know, all of this about streets, when maybe some people don't have the capacity, the time or the interest to learn this much information in this amount of time. I just really think this is being pressed forward at a, without real consideration to whether we're going to be successful or not.
All right. We're going to let some other people talk. Mr. Milner, you're up.
Thank you. Based on what I've heard so far, I kind of disagree with most of what Councilmember Tomachoff has, has mentioned. First off, my understanding is that the process that we have in place with our CIP has identified the projects that are going to be in a, a need for a bond. The comment that we don't know what any of these are, I, I don't feel like I'm in the dark on that. I, I have a CIP, I know what those things are in the bond, and we've been told that they're shortages based on that CIP. And that, therefore, we are looking for a bond in order to fill in those shortages. And so I disagree with the comment that we don't know what the bond is going to be for. I believe we, we know very well what it's going to be for. There may be some changes that will come forward, but I believe that it's going to be there. Secondly, I disagree wholeheartedly with using current fund balance to fund long-term projects at this point in time on, in this, because we, 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 there's a possibility a bond will not be. not pass. And then we may need to use that fund balance. But to use it first, without first asking the public if they're willing to fill the gap with a bond, which would be more prudent. I don't see why we would want to use fund balance on these projects that we're talking about today, the ones that have been mentioned. Secondly, or thirdly, I guess, I mean, we just had the presentation on the survey. You mentioned the survey that was done regarding where the public feels about these projects. And I disagree that it's doomed failure. The public has clearly stated in their survey, 95% accuracy, that police and fire and streets and those kind of things are high priority for them. And they would support a bond in those areas. Now, we do need to really be on top of it. And I agree wholeheartedly that the last election, we did not engage with our citizens. But we have almost six months before the November election for this bond to go into effect. And I believe we can put together a very effective campaign. And I would believe that the city would do that. And we would engage the bond committee to help make that happen. Because that is critical. I agree wholeheartedly that it's very critical. So I believe it's a very straightforward process we're asking for. We've surveyed the people, our citizens are saying, yes, let's move forward. Or let's, we would support something like this. We picked those two top priorities that they said they agree with and we're moving forward. We go to the bond committee, we ask them if they would like to do that. I'm sure you shared the survey results with them. And they said, yes, let's give this to council. It's still our decision. It's the council's decision whether or not we go out for a bond. I get that. But from here forward, we definitely must engage the bond committee and the community in any bond proposal that we have. So that it is crystal clear what they are voting on. It is crystal clear where the money would, how it would come in and how it would be used. And I think if we do that, that this bond would be, would be successful and that we could actually really make a big difference in these two areas. Now, and I get the point about parks and rec. The community doesn't have as much support for a bond for park and recreation. And there is a possibility that down the road, we may need to use some of our fund balance if we don't have a bond to support park and rec. But right now, I think our two priorities are in the transportation arena and in public safety and that we should move forward with that today. And let the bond committee truly engage and take the necessary actions to inform the community and really make a difference for the city of Glendale. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would like to point out that just, I think, two weeks ago or so, that this council agreed to take cash on hand and spend it on sports fields, which would normally be paid for through bonding, long-term capital type improvement. So we're not adverse to taking cash and using it on things that would normally have bonding. I think that, I think polling is helpful, but I think we make a mistake as leaders if we let the polling drive what we take to the public. And I mean, it's, we tested the wind and the wind said, well, these things, well, these things are polling well. Public safety always polls well, I think. And, but we also need to look at the need here, which is on page nine. And currently, public, we have enough capacity in public safety to be, that we're over the 50% mark of what we'll need in the next 10 years, just like we're over the 50% mark for the library. We're, open space and trails, no point talking about that. But parks and rec, we are well below, we're not even at the 10% mark of what we need over the next 10 years for parks and rec money. And on a percentage basis, streets doesn't even register as to what we have left in capacity versus our need over 10 years. I think the thing that we should do, and we have a little less than 50% in flood control, the place where we're running the shortest, where the need is the most dire to me is in streets and parking and parks and rec. Our polling tells us that we have work to do in those. Polling tells us we have work to do, no matter what we take out to the voters. But we have work to do to get those to pass. But that's where the need is. And we have time to come back and then go address public safety and then go address the landfill situation. We have more authorization than we could probably spend in the next two or three years in those areas. So I think that we should be looking at parks and rec, streets and parking. And we have to make the case. I'm concerned we can't make, that we, can we make the case in the few months we have remaining? Or are we better off taking the time to really put together the case to the public and be able to convince them in the, not the 23 cycle, but the 24 cycle? Do this right, get out to them and explain, here's what, here's what you need. And to be able to accomplish what is in the CIP plan and then go out two years later and come back with, you know, the needs that then will be probably public safety. And what else is short here? Maybe library by that time, not real sure what our projects are there. So that's, that would be the strategy I would suggest. Do it, go for those two and 24 and try to get a couple wins under our belt on the areas that we can, we can demonstrate the most need. And we have to convince, it's up to us and our bond committee and everyone else to convince the voters that this needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I concur with Councilmember Malnar's remarks. Comment about the sports and recre, the sports fields at Heroes Park, it's almost like some people don't want to see the park completed and that's fine, I understand. But if we had used their philosophy and bonded for the sports fields, there would be $0 in bond capacity left in parks and recreation as of this moment. I believe that the time is right to move forward with streets, transportation and public safety. I'm going to support it actively now and in the future up till election time. I would hope that this council would take the same position. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Hugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, it's, it's streets, it's the people that I talk to, that's very important. It's no different probably than other council members and the same with public safety. I agree with moving forward with it. Thank you, Mayor.
I've got a question. Mr. Stoddard, I don't know if you can answer or maybe Vicki or the city manager. Couple of years ago, Ryan and myself were at the legislature and we had some authority that we were never going to use. You addressed that earlier on in this presentation. And we even went to Goldwater and talked with them because originally they were not support that they did in fact support allowing us to do that. So we have some authority there, but we still have to go back to the voters to enable to use that monies. How was that tied in to this proposal?
Yeah, so Mayor, members of the council, so that had the open space and trails section, which we talked about, which is one of the things that we went out to poll on and it did not, the question to the, to the voters did not poll well. That legislation, if you recall, had a sunset date on it. And so we either needed to move forward and do it now, or it would, or the authorization from the legislature would sunset and appeared from the data that we got back from this polling is that it would not, it would not pass from the voters. And so it was not part of the recommended questions that would go on the ballot for 2023.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, well, I, everybody else spoke. I have no problem with moving forward with this. I like the idea of going after two items rather than four. I think it's a little overwhelming for the voters when you're asked four questions. And I think we can survive with the two, concentrate on getting those passed and then the following year or possibly after that, then come back and look at the other ones, where the priority is. But I like the plan and I will be supporting the plan. You weren't finished with your presentation?
There was, there was one final slide, Mayor, that talked about the timeline. If council does give consensus to move forward with a 2023 special election, by May 11th, we would need to notify Maricopa County of our desire to participate in that special election. Now, that doesn't lock us in, it just notifies the county so that they can start their process. So that's why the consensus today would be important to meet that deadline. Then on May 23rd, that would be the voting meeting, the last meeting available for us to meet the next June deadline. On May 23rd, we would need the council to adopt a resolution referring the questions to the ballot. And then on June 12th, that ballot language would be due to the county. August 9th would be the last day to submit, for anyone to submit for or against statements to the city clerk to be included in the publicity pamphlet. Those pamphlets would be mailed on October 3rd. October 11th, early voting ballots would be mailed. Again, every registered voter in the city of Glendale would get a ballot regardless of whether they were signed up for the permanent early mail registry or not. And then November 7th would be the date where those mail-in ballots would be tabulated and calculated. And with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, we'd be looking for consensus today from the council.
Okay, my only final question on the ballots. Will people be able to bring them to the city hall and drop them off or is it strictly going to be mail only?
Mayor, members of the council, they will be able to bring them to city hall and drop them off.
Okay, would there be any other locations, libraries, anything like that where they could drop them off?
Mayor and council, yes. Typically, there's several ballot drop-off locations throughout the city. And it depends also who else would be participating in the election. They may have a lot of options of where they can drop them off.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that the timeline for educating the public really is, the deadline is August 9th because that's, those for and against statements are critical. And that is a very tight timeline. We're coming up against now graduations, June, July, people are on vacation. I really have a high level of concern about the timeline because people have to be educated on the bond program to be able to offer these statements. And they're not, they have to pay to submit their statements too. So they have to be, you know, bought in to be able to do this. And that's three months from today. So it's a very tight timeline. That's what my biggest level of concern is, is that I just don't think we have enough time, that this is being rushed. And that's what my concern is. And I just wanted to point out too, that it's just, if it's a matter of policy to not spend our cash on hand on, on the highest priority is streets, I just find it puzzling that it's okay to spend cash on hand for sports fields and then not even be willing to go out for bond to pay for them. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there a consensus to move forward with this plan?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, okay, you do have consensus.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council item of special interest, city treasurer.
Mayor, members of the council, the staff presentation will be provided by Brett Stoddard, deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a council item of special interest that was brought forward by Councilmember This is a, and it was at the February council meeting. In scoping the item with her, the item was to make the city treasurer position identified in the city charter, a council-appointed position that reports directly to the council and not through another charter officer. The background material for the council report has the language from the city charter there. And with that, Mayor, I hand it over to you and Councilmember Tomachoff for this item.
It's your item, we'll let her speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this discussion has happened at different periods of time and I know that we do appoint the director of budget and finance resolution. We appoint that person the city treasurer. But I think, and I just want to read it so that the people who haven't, haven't read the staff report or the charter know what the charter says. The charter says, "The council shall appoint an officer of the city who shall live in the, who shall have the title of city treasurer, who shall receive and have custody of all of the money of the city and shall keep and save said money and dispense the same only as provided by the laws of this state or as provided by ordinance and who shall always be bound by the constitution, laws, ordinances upon whom legal garnishments and demands may be served. He will be, he will serve at the pleasure of the council." There are only four other positions in the charter that speak to being, serving at the pleasure of the council. That is the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk and the presiding judge. I think the charter clearly, voter-approved charter clearly wanted a separate person to be managing the money of the city. And I, I wonder, you know, some of the issues that have happened over the years, some of the decisions that were made. I think about Camelback Ranch, if there had been somebody who could have been essentially the CFO of the organization, who could speak freely to the council, the mayor and council about proposals without fear of retribution from their superiors to outline what their concerns and this type of thing might be, the financial concerns, not the legal concerns because that's a city attorney's job. I wonder if some of these, these decisions would not have been made. This is not about who's sitting here now, about who's sitting in any of these chairs. This is about the protection of the taxpayers' money into the future. And I just wanted to lay out a few things. I, the reason I brought this up is because I didn't realize how much money we had on hand. And I know I'm looking, we get monthly revenue reports, but they don't tell us everything that I would like to know. I'm not able to direct an employee to provide this information. And the last financial report we got was, I believe it was December of 2022. So we're, we're not, I mean, we don't even have any reports for 2023 to show us what this actual city finances are. And, you know, the way the information is relayed and shared in the city is through the city manager's office or his designee. I've been personally asked to copy either assistant city manager or somebody on my emails. I'm not doing that. But anybody who replies to me copies the city manager. So there's no exchange of information specific to the city finances, which I think the charter clearly outlines, where there's direct contact and direct access for the, for the council to have this information. Clearly, the voters wanted this person to be independent of anybody else in the city and only directly report to the council. And we're not doing that. And I think, you know, it was, it's voter-approved. I think the taxpayers deserve the protection of somebody who's basically standing between their money in the door and that can come and talk to the council and have conversations, confidential conversations with the mayor and council about the city's finances. And that doesn't exist at this time. We really only have access to the information that we're allowed to have, honestly. That's, that's the way it works. And I guess I'll give up the floor for a few minutes, Mayor, but I'd like to have it back. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume, me or Councilmember?
I'm looking at you, yes.
Okay. Again, I request that you call me by my name and title, please, so that there's clarity. I would agree with Councilmember Tomachoff. I know I raised this question when I first got on the council and it's, it's something that's been in the back of my mind for the last eight years. I think the charter is very clear and the intent of the voters was to have a city treasurer that answered to the council, provided unvarnished financial advice and financial updates to the council and that served at the pleasure of the the council, and that served at the pleasure of the council, as our very able clerk does, as our able city attorney does, and just as our able city judge does, and just as our city manager does. I don't think, I don't think it would be right to have a city manager that answered to any one of our other officers, and I don't think it's right to have a city treasurer that answers to the manager. The design of this is about, all about checks and balances. And that's why we have a clerk for the record-keeping and the publications, and why we have the attorney to provide, it's all about providing checks and balances. And this is an important check that we don't have, and it does leave our community out of balance. I believe that, I don't think we're looking at a significant increase in money, and if there's one area in which perhaps far more money that could be saved than the cost of providing for this position, it would be here with the treasurer's office. We would do well, and I think even previous councils would have done well, to do what the charter says, and have a treasurer that answers to the council and answers the questions we have and gives us the advice we're asking for directly, and doesn't answer to anyone else in the city, answers to the council the way the charter says. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city charter was established over 100 years ago.
That's not accurate.
Have you ever asked yourself why no one else over 100 years has established a separate office for city treasurer, and it is only occurring now? It may be because some people feel that they don't get enough information. If that's the case, ask. Can you provide it with the information you need? I question the necessity at this moment in time of all of a sudden feeling the absolute burning desire to create a separate city treasurer. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a few questions about the treasurer. Do we currently have a city treasurer?
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, yes, the council has designated Levi Gibson, the Budget and Finance Director, as the city treasurer.
So is that, how, when do we do that, and how often is that done?
So you did it in September by an ordinance designating the signature authority of some members, and at that point, you designated Levi Gibson as the city treasurer.
Okay, all right. So we do have a city treasurer, and he basically takes care of what other duties are outlined in the charter as a city treasurer? Does he take care of all those duties?
The Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, the Budget and Finance Director oversees the responsibilities, the money, the accounting staff. He also participates in some of the auditing functions that are set up, if that answers your question.
Okay, yes, thank you. I guess my comment would be, you know, we have a treasurer. Each time that I need additional information, financial information regarding anything going on with the budget, et cetera, I pick up the phone or I send an email, and I get a pretty quick response. And I feel that's very adequate. If a citizen calls me and has a question about something going on financially, I pick up the phone or send an email, and I get a very quick response. I don't see the benefit of needing to add an additional body that reports directly to the council to be able to do basically the same thing that is already being done. If I felt like there was some transparency issues, or that there were nefarious things going on behind the scenes that I couldn't get to, then I might be inclined to say, yes, we need to add an additional full-time position that reports directly to the council only, and they would then provide us information. I don't know how that would work in our city. I mean, if we created that position, how does that affect all the other departments? How does it affect the finance department itself? How does it affect the way people report? How does it affect the budget process that the manager puts forward? I just see there's a lot of questions that would come forward that I don't see the need to do it. I feel we currently have a treasurer that fulfills the demands and the needs of the charter requirement. I don't see any need to move forward with also adding an additional position called an appointed treasurer by the council that's going to be doing what's already being done by very competent individuals within the finance department. So with that, I'll just yield.
Thank you. Okay, well, I, I'll get to you in a minute, but I'm going to go ahead and do my part. On September 13th, ordinance 022-57 was brought up. The ordinance reads, "The council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing designated officers to deposit, withdraw city funds from designated bank accounts, directing all bank with city accounts to recognize the signatures of said officers on electronic fund transfers, checks for deposit, and/or withdrawal, and declaring an emergency." Section 1, that Levi Gibson be duly appointed as city treasurer, and then Section 4 says that all checks drawn on the city of Glendale accounts in the amount of $50,000 or more shall require two signatures. Those signatures go back to city manager Kevin Phelps, Assistant City Manager Ms. Rios, Assistant City Manager Jam Shidmetta, Deputy City Manager Richard St. John, Deputy City Manager Brent Stoddard, and City Clerk Julie Bauer, along with Mr. Gibson. Now, I find it interesting that the person that seems to be most concerned about this on September 13th is the one that made the motion. A motion was made by Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff, and it was seconded by Ian Hugh to adopt ordinance 022-57. Even more remarkable, there's been a couple people that have expressed dis, you know, unhappiness with this particular thing that we all approved, yet it was voted unanimous. So I don't know why, eight months ago, it was fine with you, and today it's not.
I'd like to answer that. Thank you, Mayor, and I wonder who pulled that up and highlighted it for you, but I've seen it. Thank you for reading it again. Have you read the charter?
I have.
Because you have, and so what do you have to say about shall serve at the pleasure of the council?
Okay, well, again, we're still going to have the proper core going back and forth.
I can see how this is going, Mayor, I can see how this is going.
Ms. Tomachoff, you asked me a question, I'll answer it.
Okay.
I have seen the charter. I've also talked with the attorney, and the attorney said what we're doing is legal. It's been going on for 50, or I'm sorry, five decades or more.
Nobody said it's illegal. I said it's not in compliance with the charter as the charter. Maybe we should get a legal opinion on what we should be doing. Would you be willing to do that?
I had a legal opinion from our city attorney.
I've talked to the city attorney, and he says I'm correct in this. So I've talked to him before I brought this up, and let me tell you the reason why I brought it up, is because when we were started talking about City Hall, which started out at $29 million and morphed into where we are now, I said, where's this money going to come from? Oh, we have money, we had to do a special presentation to show us how much money we had. We didn't know how much money we had. I don't ask every month, how much do we have in fund balance, how much, over and above. I've been hearing we're doing very well, but I had no idea what, how we were doing very well. But I do see things like this, where it shows, and I did question Ms. Rios about this, but she says that the fund balance is being observed as 25% of our ongoing operating revenues, but this slide says our general fund balance policy is $50 million. The word "policy" is used in this, in this slide that was given to us. So in my mind, this is what the policy is, this is not what the policy is, the policy is 25%. So these things started giving me concern, and it's not about, and I appreciate Councilmember Melnar, that you're comfortable right now, and this is all about you and your comfort, but this is not what this is about. This is about protecting the city's finances into the future, not today, not tomorrow, not when this person's sitting in the city manager's chair, or somebody else is sitting up here in the council seat. It's not what it's about. It's about doing what the voters said they wanted to have done in the charter, was to protect their money with an independent person and handling the money that does not answer to the city manager that answers to the mayor and council. That's what it's about. It's not that I'm upset, it's that I, some of these things came to light, the fund balance policy was, didn't realize we weren't observing the fund balance policy. I'm told that we are, even though the slide tells me that, you know, all the way through fiscal year 2028, the fund balance policy is showing $50 million. That's what this is about. This is about protecting the taxpayers' money from now into the future, and I wonder, we haven't had one, this charter was updated way more recently than 100 years. But had we had an independent treasurer, some of the financial missteps that the city took could have been avoided. I believe that with all my heart. And I don't want to set up the city in the future for something like that to happen, where somebody literally has the ability to come and talk to us about their concerns. We don't have it set up that way right now. I can, I can see how this is going, I knew this is exactly how it was going to go. I know people have been out in front of this from the very beginning, I'm aware of that. So perhaps I'll be bringing forward a council item of special interest to do a charter, do a charter review, because apparently the charter does not want to be observed by the majority of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to add, just to my previous comments, and in response to some that's been said here, is that, again, this is checks and balances, and it's not about whether or not any given council member receives answers to the questions they ask. More importantly, it's about us getting the answers, the information, that we don't even know to ask the question about, just like we do from our city attorney. I would not be comfortable with a city attorney that answered, you know, just appointing somebody on the city attorney staff to be our city attorney, and they answered, you know, to the city manager, that would be no way to run this. And I think financial advice is every bit as important to the residents of our community as legal advice is. They apparently thought so when they wrote this charter, when they revised it. And, and again, it's about us getting the information we don't even know to ask for. That's why, that and in keeping with the charter as it's written, that's why I would support us moving forward on this.
Mr. Melner.
I would just like to follow up the one comment. The city council is the ultimate vote, is the ultimate yes or no on any financial transactions within the city. Yes, the city manager has some leeway in smaller contracts, but a treasurer is not the person that's going to make that decision. A treasurer, yes, may provide advice, but nevertheless, it's still the city council who needs to look at the facts and make a decision as to whether or not they're going to move forward on any kind of financial transaction. So a treasurer is not going to stop that. It's the city council, me personally, I am responsible for the citizens and for the transactions of the budget and what happens, because I vote on it, and I'm held accountable as to what that transaction is. And if I vote on something, and it turns out very bad, the city council is responsible. It wouldn't have mattered if we had a treasurer. The financial decisions that were made in the previous councils, they were made on the information that they had at the time, and they made decisions, and they were held responsible for any decision that went bad or didn't go bad. Some of the decisions were tough decisions, and we made similar decisions ourselves in financial situations. I think it behooves us to look forward in the next decade. Where could this possibly go? How could it possibly go bad? And I think we're doing that as a council. We're reevaluating all those financial decisions to make sure that we do not make any mistakes that would cost the city to really have some financial troubles in the future. So with that, I don't see how the approval of a treasurer would change that process. It's going to be the same. And as, I need to reiterate, you know, I am responsible for looking at the budget, and I'm responsible to my residents in my district, to giving them a, an ability to rely on my judgment when I vote on a budget, after I've studied it, after I've researched it, after I've asked the questions, and if there's things that don't quite look right, it's on me, it's incumbent on me to ask the questions or to not vote for it. So I don't see how adding an intermediary is going to change that process at all. It's going to, it's going to be the same. Yes, a treasurer might, could provide additional information, but I just can't see how that person's going to just, all of a sudden, would stand up and tell the council, you know, to vote or not to vote on a certain issue. He'll have an opinion, or she, but nevertheless, it's still up to the council, and that's my point. The council makes that decision, not the treasurer. Adding the treasurer is not going to change that. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, you're up.
Thank you. I concur with Councilmember Melnar's remarks, and again, I'm going to get past all this fluff that I'm hearing. If you don't know something, ask. If you don't get the answer that's clear to you, ask again. If you're still not satisfied, ask again. You will get the information that you require. I'm not going to talk about is a city treasurer needed or not treated. I'm going to talk about motive. Several council members are so distrustful of senior staff at this point that that is the impetus for asking for a city treasurer. They think that somehow a city treasurer, because it reports to council, will be so independent that it will be comfortable in giving answers that might be in opposition to what senior management recommends. The problem is not, do we have a city treasurer or not? The problem is, is that it doesn't matter what is said or done by senior management, there are some people who just will not accept their comments and their recommendations. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you, Mayor. The point is, is that an independent treasurer could provide advice in multiple scenarios that we're looking at, investing in parking garages and things like that, that we could analyze that it's coming from somebody who's independent, who cannot be fired by the person sitting in the city manager's chair, not necessarily, but any city manager in the future that can bring us unfettered advice and run numbers that are, literally, they don't have to worry about their, any kind of retaliation. Obviously, that's what the voters want, it's not what, there's not going to be a consensus. I understand that, and I didn't expect there to be a consensus, but I thought it was important to bring it up. And the reason I made the motion is because somebody handed me the motion, that's how we do it here. We don't get to decide which motions we make and which motions we, that's handed out and decided for us. So to answer the mayor's question, that's why I made the motion, because it was handed to me, and I made, I made the motion. But I would like to just point out, because this was in the paper today about the Coyotes, and there were some things in there that I found kind of surprising, and I don't believe any of this, I would like to have a treasurer run some of these numbers to explain to me exactly financially what these offers that were made to the Coyotes, some of them I'm not even aware of, maybe I don't remember, but Phelps initially proposed four-way ownership of the arena with Glendale, the Coyotes, Westgate owner Yam Properties, and the arena manager ASM Global each owning a 25% stake. I would think that would be something that should be vetted to the city treasurer. Then the next one is Phelps then offered to sell the Coyotes full ownership of its arena at an incredibly discounted number based on them staying there. I don't remember there ever being a consensus to ever sell the arena to the Coyotes. If that offer was made, I believe it was made without our input, and I would still want a treasurer to be able to run those numbers. What is an incredibly discounted number? What does that even mean? And a treasurer would be involved in that and be able to provide us advice and information. The last one I'll go through is, the final pitch to keep the Coyotes was whatever ownership stake the Morello wanted in the arena... stake the Morello wanted in the arena, I'm not aware of that, plus 10 acres of land for vertical development in Westgate, and public money for arena renovations, matching whatever the Coyotes agreed to spend in their corporate offices and a wellness center. We never got an opportunity, even in the, some of the stuff that I remember, to actually look at the dollars and cents and what was involved there from somebody who's independent, who can provide that information to us to say, what are we looking at in dollars and cents? What does that actually mean? We don't have that. Anybody who can provide that, no offense to Mr. Gibson, he's, I, I do trust him, I do trust Vicky Rios, I trust a lot of, I trust the staff, but I also understand that at any time, there can be repercussions for, and there have been repercussions for giving council information that people don't want us to have. I'm aware that that does happen. So that's the point of a city treasurer, and I apologize for having to have this conversation, but I, I, this is, this needs to be said, that there, there are and have been repercussions for people giving council information that didn't, that people did not want us to have. And the city treasurer, there's nothing more important than, than the money, because that's how we pay for public safety, that's how we pay for everything, is with the money. And I understand there's not going to be a consensus for this today, it's not about who's comfortable, it's not, it's not about that, the point is being completely missed. I will be asking for a Charter review as a council item of special interest. Thank you.
Mr. Hugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I know it is, we are the final say on everything, but we do have one of our attorneys here. Are we following the Charter?
Mayor, members of the council, and Councilmember Hugh. Yes, my understanding, noting that I was not, if any, of the conversations that you have separately had with Mr. Bailey, but my understanding is that the council is in compliance with, with the Charter by virtue of adopting the ordinance in September.
Thank you. I guess the only thing I have left is I do understand that vice mares typically hand out people to make nominations, but at the same time, you did vote to support it.
I voted years to support that, not just that time, for years. But I think, I think we've been making a mistake, and it's also time, also opportunities to go back and say, we should be doing this. I'd like to get a outside legal opinion on this, to find out if we're in compliance with the Charter. I've spoken to our city attorney, and it clearly, there's only four positions that it says serves at the pleasure of the council. That is, that means that literally the city attorney should be able to serve by resolution under the city manager, so should the city clerk. Are you comfortable doing that? There's a reason why it reads that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I have a question of our attorney.
Go ahead.
Does the city manager have the authority to fire the city treasurer?
Turn your microphone on.
Mr. Gibson's our treasurer, and he works at the pleasure of the city manager. So could not the city manager fire the city treasurer?
Mayor, members of the council, I think you start to get into some semantic and legal definitions when you start to parse things that way. Clearly, if Mr. Gibson, in his role as director, reports to the city manager, the city manager could make a decision with respect to that position, whether that necessarily overlaps and includes the city treasurer. I mean, I think that's a somewhat separate question.
Well, it may be a separate question, but that's, question's on the table as well.
Director serve at will, by the way.
Yeah, director serve at will. So if, let's say, for instance, the city attorney were to, or no, the city manager were to fire Mr. Gibson, and Mr. Gibson, please, don't take this personally, I'm only using you because you happen to be sitting in that hot seat at the moment, okay? So please, really don't. So if the city manager were to fire Mr. Gibson, he'd still remain our treasurer, right? He'd be our treasurer until we, until the council did something, right? Which could be days, weeks, you know? Who knows when we'd have the, the votes to make a change? Isn't that kind of contrary to the concept of, of the Charter and the independence of that position that's designed in the Charter?
Mayor, members of the council, I mean, I think that starts to get into a political question that is not legal in nature, and it's a political question that you yourselves have to, to answer.
No, I'm, I'm asking legally, would Mr. Gibson remain the city treasurer even if he were fired from his position as finance director by the city manager?
Mayor, members of the council, again, I mean, I'm giving off-the-cuff legal advice for a very complicated question. I think that is probably what would be the case, but again, I mean, that's, that's something we would really have to sit down and, and then think about.
So again, I mean, just the vagueness of that ability to come to an answer on that indicates why we really need to have, you know, that's just one more reason. And I got to say, it doesn't surprise me that the only council member sitting up here that voted for Camelback Ranch, based on the advice that they were getting from the city manager at the time and the finance director at the time, that the, only council member up here that voted for that-
All right, we're, we're going to stop this.
Is in fact in support of that same system today, and we're trying to make sure that sort of thing couldn't happen again.
All right. Is there a consensus for Ms. Tomachoff's proposal here to have that as a separate position?
Yes.
Okay, there is not a consensus. Moving on.
Council item of special interest, sober living homes.
Mayor, members of the council here provides report on our final item today is Rick St. John, Deputy City Manager.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would like to ask Mr. St. John a question before he begins his presentation. Is that okay? Mr. St. John, instead of trying to figure out a way to accommodate these unlicensed sober living homes, which we all hate, is there any reason, and you would know, is there any reason why the city just can't pass an ordinance banning them?
Mayor, members of the council, council, or Vice Mayor, I know there's state law at play that protects certain types of sober living homes. I, I know there's a lot of research being done at the state and regional levels about what cities can and can't do. We are paying attention and engaged in conversations around that, and ultimately, we may land somewhere in that area of being able to regulate heavier than we can currently under the state laws as it is, it exists today. But I do believe, if given consensus today, and I'm able to bring this back for a more robust, robust conversation, the council will see that there are things that we can do under our current ordinances and that are in line with state law to help us regulate this much more heavily than we have been in the past.
So in essence, you're saying state preempts us from just banning them outright? Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I believe there are laws, state laws, that are going to protect the sober living homes' rights to exist, yes.
Okay. So then, this is for the general public, so our only option is, is to devise more onerous regulations to try to curb their proliferation. Would that be correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, sober living home is a very definitive term used in state law, so you have to meet certain requirements to be deemed a sober living home. The city can require that these quote-unquote sober living homes meet those requirements, and those are rigorous requirements that the majority, if not all currently in existence, are not meeting. And so, yes, there are things that we can do under our current ordinances, that's the zoning ordinance primarily, that fall within state law. There are rights as a city to require information, to know where they exist, and to somewhat regulate distance requirements between them. But today I'm here just to get consensus from the council, to bring this conversation back in a workshop. Councilmember Tomachoff made this request in April as a council item of special interest. Part of our process is to get council's consensus to, for staff to do the work. It is a minimal amount of work. All I need to do really is put some slides together and bring back the documents for a public discussion, and today I'm here to get that consensus from council.
All right.
I have a question.
And I, I totally agree with this, and I know that every one of us have got concerns and issues, and it's something that needs to be addressed. So we'll take your questions, and then after that, if there's no other questions, I'd, I'd like to just move on and have a consensus at that point. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Councilmember Melner and I, I think we probably have the biggest issues in our district, at least as far as I'm aware of, and we've talked about it the most. But we, we also, when you bring this back, will you be bringing back what resources will be necessary too? I mean, code, this is going to be, I think, managed by code, but I don't know that code currently has the necessary resources. So if there's going to be an ask, or what, what resources we're going to need, will that be part of your presentation, so we don't have to then delay it further to find out what are we going to need to actually get this done?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I will bring back a very detailed conversation about what resources we're using to help regulate sober living homes in our communities, and the process that we've defined to get that done. It is primarily the responsibility of code on the front end, but then there are other departments that come in at various stages, Development Services, the Fire Marshals, Tax and License, all have a role, but we'll talk about that in detail.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yeah, unanimous. Okay, city manager report.
Yes, three quick items, Mayor, members of council. Under your guidance, as you know, the city's been very physically disciplined to ensure that we're on stable financial grounds. One of the measures that we use to, to look at our success are independent third-party bond agencies who will rate our various types of debt. I'm pleased to let you know that Standard &amp; Poor has just reaffirmed their AA+ rating on our refunding bonds and on the rest of our existing excise tax debt. But I'm also want to note is that for the first time, Fitch, who has not rated our bonds before, Fitch has assigned a AA rating to our senior excise tax revenue refunding obligations. And so again, this is a new, a new one for them. They did a very detailed look at the city finances, and these are both outstanding ratings for the city. Regarding the state budget, you, there's been several things in the news regarding intent of the legislature, including adding some items into the budget package that it sounds like the governor's office is interested in pursuing. And while, while there's a, a lot in the budget, I did want to highlight a couple of the items that I think were specific to Glendale. Within the budget, the legislature's appropriated $200 million for the Arizona Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, designed around water conservation grants. And that agency had just started to open up the windows to submit grant applications for up to $3 million. So each entity can, can go up to $3 million of new funding. I want to make the council aware that the staff is going to move quickly to submit an application requesting the maximum amount of that grant of the $3 million. If awarded the funds, staff will come back with a recommendation to the council that those funds be used to bolster the city's landscape rebate program and create additional water efficiency rebates. The funds could accelerate the transportation's project, which is really your project, to convert our right-of-way to zero-scape landscape and smart irrigation technology. Because these are ARPA funds, there's deadlines on it, and so the reason why we'll come back with a recommendation in these two areas is because we already have a project in place, and we already have expressed that with the council, because they have to be obligated, the funds had to be obligated by June 24th and expended by December 26th. So we felt those would be two projects that appear to align with the council priorities. In addition to the, that grant program, one of our legislators has also put a placeholder in the budget for $800,000 to be provided to Glendale specifically for conversion of landscape and the right-of-way to reduce water landscaping. Again, these things are still, can be pulled in and pulled out, but we are, I think we're setting up really good to have resources for our continued effort to reduce our water consumption that's here. Then my last item is, consistent with our policy on the disposition of city-owned property, I want to notify the, the council that the manager's office has received an unsolicited offer of interest in a city-owned parcel, and I'll be bringing the offer forward to the council as the policy directs. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. City Attorney report?
Mayor, none at this time.
Nothing?
No.
Okay, next item is a, a council item of special interest. Each council member has the opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed in a future workshop. I'm going to start this one off. I have a council item of special interest today, a follow-up to the last workshop. We had a conversation on presumptive cancer legislation. I want to make certain that we make additional efforts to be sure we close any of those gaps that may exist in current law to further enable us to take care of public servants and their families. This is an issue that I know I care about, I'm sure everybody up here cares about. I would like to request that the city manager work with the Government Relations Office along with any other appropriate department to craft potential state legislation that would allow firefighters and other public servants who have previously been diagnosed and treated for cancer. And then if that cancer was to reoccur, that the cancer could be considered a new type of cancer, thus eligible to fall under current presumptive cancer rules. By doing that, close a potential gap in coverage. I'd also like city management's team to work with the International Association of Firefighters, Mr. Arik, and back to make an effort to get legislation sponsored and passed during the 2024 Arizona State Legislative Session. That's all I have. We'll go ahead and go, Councilmember Eldon is not here, we'll go to Councilmember Hugh.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Turner?
Up today, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Nothing today.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to go into executive session. Any discussion, hearing, none? All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Mayor, you guys have it, do have it. This council meeting is recessed.